Ms. Hall, could you please call the roll?
Yes, ma'am. Dr. Chase?
Here.
Ms. Eason?
Here.
Ms. Guy?
Here.
Ms. Halsted?
I'm here.
Thank you. Ms. Healy?
Here.
Ms. Irish?
Here.
Ms. Randall?
Here.
Ms. Sigmund?
Here.
And Dr. Warner?
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Could I have an authorization for Ms. Halsted to participate electronically?
Authorization for Ms. Halsted to participate electronically.
Second.
Okay. Please cast your votes. That motion passes six, I assume seven to zero. Ms. Halsted, do you vote to allow yourself to participate electronically?
I agree. Thank you.
Can I have a motion and a second for the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Any discussion on the agenda? Please cast your votes. Ms. Halsted, do you approve the agenda?
Yes, ma'am.
That motion passes seven to zero.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Any discussion on the consent agenda?
Yes. About looking, losing good principles, but I'm very proud of the principles I'm losing.
They're not losing them. We're sharing them.
Hey, we haven't voted yet.
Please cast your votes on the consent agenda. Ms. Halsted?
I'm also a yes.
Okay. Motion passes seven to zero. Dr. Smith?
All right. Good evening. Board members, tonight on your consent agenda, you did approve several new principles that I'd like to take a few moments and introduce tonight. We do have four principles and we have one new Executive Director of Transportation. So I am going to call them in alphabetical order by last name. And we'll invite them to come to the podium and say a few words if they would like. So the first principle I'd like to introduce is the new principal of our new Elementary School 18, Ms. Karen Bingham. Ms. Bingham will launch the creation and brand of Elementary School 18 as the school's founding principal. Ms. Bingham has been a part of Team Stafford for her entire career as a teacher and assistant principal and currently as the principal at Wide Water Elementary School. In this position, Ms. Bingham worked with the Central Office staff to create the first dual-language immersion program for Stafford schools. Ms. Bingham is eager to bring her expertise in instructional leadership, community engagement, and school improvement to this exciting challenge of leading a new elementary school in Stafford. Ms. Bingham earned her Bachelor's Degree in Music and Music Education from JMU and her Master's of Arts in Music Education from George Mason University. She received her Supervision and Administration endorsement from the University of Mary Washington, and we are thrilled to have her plan and lead Elementary School 18.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Smith, I am beyond excited and humbled by such an incredible opportunity that you are bestowing on me and one of my colleagues this evening. We are so excited to, I've lived in the area of which I will finally be a principal, in the area I suspect it will be zoned for, for 23 years. And to get to bring something like this to the community in which I live is pretty exciting. But I can't stand before you tonight and not take a moment to say, we tell everyone, it takes a village to raise a child. Well, it takes a village to raise a principal too. And I cannot stand here tonight without telling you about the incredible educators I have been surrounded by at Rock Hill, at Conway, at our early childhood programs, and my beloved Wide Water. I am here because of them and the incredible support I've received here at Central Office and from each of you. And my amazing husband in the back and my two children who are graduates of Stafford County. And my mom and dad who are all probably streaming tonight. So I just, thank you so very much for the trust. And we are going to give our all to make this just an incredible place for our children here in Stafford County to continue to learn, grow, and just soar and be their very best. Thank you. Congratulations.
All right. The next principal I'd like to introduce to you is Ms. Christina Herrera, the new principal at Kate Waller Barrett Elementary School. Ms. Herrera will join the team at Kate Waller Barrett Elementary School as the school's new principal. Ms. Herrera joins us from Prince William County Public Schools where she served as a teacher for five years and most recently as an assistant principal. In her current school, she formed the school attendance team and reduced chronic absenteeism by nine percent for the current academic year. She is focused on using innovative strategies to elevate student outcomes for all students. Ms. Herrera earned her Bachelor's Degree in Psychology and a Master of Arts in Teaching from Christopher Newport University. She earned a Master's in Education and Educational Leadership from George Mason University. And we'd like to take this opportunity to welcome Ms. Herrera to our team.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to say thank you for this incredible opportunity, and I'm very excited to actually return to Stafford, which is where I started my educational career and journey. And so I just want to say thanks for that. Welcome back. Thank you.
All right. The next principal is not new to you either, is Ms. Rachel Novak, principal at Ferry Farm Elementary School. Ms. Novak has worked for the past two years as the principal at Kate Waller Barrett Elementary School and will now join the team at Ferry Farm Elementary School as the new principal. She has previously served as an assistant principal at Wide Water Elementary. Ms. Novak is passionate about building a school community based on trust and transparency to provide all scholars with the tools they need to be successful both within and beyond the classroom walls. Ms. Novak earned her Bachelor's Degree in Psychology from Robert Morris University and her Master's Degree in Special Education from the University of Mary Washington. She completed the endorsement, administration, and supervision at Longwood University. Congratulations, Ms. Novak, and welcome to Ferry Farm.
Thank you. Dr. Smith, Madam Chair, and members of the board. I am thrilled to have this opportunity to, just as my colleague Ms. Bingham mentioned, work and have an impact on a community in which I also live. So I am a Fredericksburg resident. My husband and I have been there for the past 16 years. And I'm going to tell you very quickly my little Ferry Farm story before I knew better as far as the application process. And I was trying to get my first teaching job ever. I just marched my paper resume in there, met with the two lovely ladies in the front office, and hoped for the best. But my journey took me elsewhere for a while. I'm excited to continue this work alongside my amazing colleagues in Stafford. Thank you all for your continued support as we learn and grow through this together. And I'm really excited for Christina to come to Barrett as well. Thank you.
All right. Next, opening up our new Elementary School 19 is Mr. JR Raybold. Mr. Raybold will launch the creation and brand of our new Elementary School 19 as the school's founding principal. He's been a part of Team Stafford over 24 years as a classroom teacher, an assistant principal, and currently as the principal at Conway Elementary School. In this position, Mr. Raybold has established and maintained a positive school culture focused on deep community and family relationships while inspiring the next generation of educational leaders. Mr. Raybold is eager to apply his skills, passion, and energy to build a new elementary school. Mr. Raybold earned his Bachelor of Science degree from Penn State University and a Master of Education in Educational Leadership from George Mason University. Congratulations, JR.
Madam Chair, members of the school board, Dr. Smith, thanks for the opportunity. This journey, we now call the One Family at Conway, started 15 years ago. Almost to the day when I was able to be named as the Conway Principal. My son was one, Tyler, who's now a junior at Stafford High School. And Tyler and Eric wasn't, well, hadn't even been thought of yet. And as I told our staff today, we've been through everything, all the highs and lows that a One Family could be. The new love and marriages and divorces and, not mine, but thank God, the beautiful lady beside him. I clearly married up. Everybody in this room know I married up. So it's Janet Grafton. But it has been an incredible ride. I would be, the only way I'd ever leave that place is is to do, do it again. And that's what we're going to do. We're going to build an incredible place for kids in 18 and 19. We won't let you down, sir. And to our Conway people that just, and to my family and to everybody in this room, as Karen said, you built us. We are who we are because of every single person in our communities that we've served, and we're honored to be able to do it again. So, thank you. Thanks. Appreciate it.
We have one more introduction this evening, and that is our new Executive Director of Transportation Services, Mr. John Wilkots. Mr. Wilkots could not be with us this evening, but he will join Team Stafford as our new Division Executive Director of Transportation Services. He's currently the Executive Director of Transportation and Fleet Services in Houston, Texas, which is the seventh-largest school district in the nation. He served for HISD as their Training and Support Manager for seven years prior to his current role. And really, one of the things that we were looking for that jumped out with Mr. Wilkots is his ability to foster strong relationships with stakeholders, vendors, and customers to ensure transportation service delivery within set guidelines. And he has a proven track record for managing complex projects and optimizing workflow processes. We're very excited about Mr. Wilkots joining our team. He had completed his Bachelor's in Business Administration and Project Management at Columbia Southern University, and he will be beginning with us on March 3rd. So congratulations to Mr. Wilkots. And that concludes our appointments for tonight.
Thank you very much. I would like to introduce the representatives from our Citizens Budget Advisory Committee who are making their annual report and recommendations. Thank you guys for being flexible and being here today. They were supposed to be here for our meeting that was snowed out or snowed in. So, thank you very much. Yep. Dr. Hunter.
Just let me know when. All right. Well, good evening, everyone, and school board members and community members. My name is Dr. Alicia Hunter, and I'm the Chair of the Citizens Budget Advisory Committee. Tonight, I am presenting the 2025 Seaback Annual Report. This presentation is based on the 2025 Citizens Budget Report for Stafford County Public Schools, which is Citizens Advocacy for Public School Funding Gaps and Sustainable Solutions. This full report will be available on Board Docs. It's about 30 pages long. It's a great read for our Sunday afternoon. So this will be an abbreviated version of that report, but please check it out when you get a chance. This report represents collective research from Stafford citizens with expertise in law, commercial real estate, education, military, government contracting, nonprofit leadership, and finance. Tonight, we have a clear and urgent message. Stafford County ranked 117 out of 132 school divisions in Virginia for per pupil spending, despite rapid residential growth and increasing student enrollment. We're going to present not just a problem, but a roadmap forward. This is about accountability, collaboration, and making education funding a real priority for Stafford County's future. Next slide. Oh, I can do it. All right. So Seaback serves as a bridge between the community and policymakers advising the school board on resource allocation and financial needs. Our role is to evaluate funding trends, advocate for necessary investments, and ensure transparency. Just want to go over our accomplishments over the last two years. And just a quick summary, we've really focused on research, community engagement, and advocacy. Just in the last year, we've partnered with 20-plus PTA and PTO groups engaged with school principals and work with economic development organizations. We've developed an advocacy toolkit to educate citizens about school funding and how to participate in local civic engagement. We have also prioritized student engagement as well. We've partnered with the Social Studies Department to align learning with civics education, fostering youth involvement and advocacy, as well as sought out opportunities for students to receive volunteer hours for local civic engagement. Our work has resulted in more support for advocacy that which further supports the shared vision for investing in our public schools. Stafford County is one of the best places to live in Virginia. We're ranked highly for young professionals, families, and homeownership. Our population surge is driven by new residential developments, a strong job market, and our proximity to Washington DC. This growth brings opportunity, but also increased demand for public services, infrastructure, and most importantly, education. Stafford County Public Schools must keep pace with expansion to sustain high-quality education and workforce readiness as the county continues to thrive. According to the Stafford Economic Development Authority, Stafford County's economic strategy focuses on four key industries: cybersecurity, data centers, logistics and supply chain, and advanced manufacturing to drive business expansion and long-term economic sustainability. We are becoming an ideal hub for data centers and technology firms. Very exciting. Additionally, Stafford County Public Schools is experiencing rapid enrollment growth with over 32,268 students currently enrolled, a number that continues to rise due to increasing residential development and population expansion. Despite Stafford's economic growth and business-friendly policies, we lack the capacity to fully fund our schools. For years, superintendents have warned that school budgets are trimmed to the bare minimum, just enough to keep the lights on. Yet, enrollment keeps growing, classroom sizes are increasing, and Stafford remains ranked 117th in per pupil spending in the state. Stafford County faces a $14.2 million gap to fully fund the proposed FY '26 budget on top of an additional $59 million in unmet unfunded needs. This isn't about excess spending. It's about meeting the basic educational needs of a rapidly growing student population. Stafford County teacher salaries remain uncompetitive, driving educators to neighboring districts like Prince William. Prince William County is offering roughly 13% increases in teacher salary over the next couple of years while Stafford struggles to match competitive pay. The Stafford 2040 Vision promotes a public education as an economic driver, yet underfunding our schools undermines this goal. We cannot expect to attract top industries while struggling to provide competitive teacher salaries and modern learning environments. If we continue this trajectory, Stafford's competitive edge will fade. Businesses, families, and top educators will choose better-funded communities, leaving Stafford at a disadvantage. Our research shows outdated state funding formulas keep Stafford underfunded. Limited local revenue investment leaves Stafford lagging behind its regional peers. Overreliance on residential zoning instead of commercial development strains school funding. Declining student achievement is a direct result of insufficient school funding. Let's go a little bit deeper. Why do we want to highlight outdated state funding formulas? We are the eighth richest county, but the funding models overestimate Stafford's ability to fund schools locally. And these formulas limit state funding to pay our teachers competitively and are based state funding on state ratios over actual student needs, failing to provide modern, high-quality education. Since we have limitations on state funding due to outdated models, local funding is key. Neighboring districts such as Prince William and Loudoun Counties invest significantly more in education than Stafford. Prince William funds 52% of its school budget locally, while Loudoun funds 71% of its school budget locally, while Stafford only funds 36.7%. Now, Loudoun is not a typical comparison, but I've included Loudoun because of the revenue they generate from data centers. And Stafford EDA promotes Stafford as a future data center hub. We have to acknowledge the gap in local funding, how it directly affects teacher pay, classroom resources, and student achievement. Stafford markets itself as a low-cost business location, which attracts companies but does not translate into higher school funding. Economic development should not come at the expense of public education. Low cost to do business at what cost to schools. Look at the map here. Look at our residential zoning compared to our commercial zoning. Green, brown, and yellow represent agriculture and residential zones, while pink, blue, and purple indicate commercial zones. The overwhelming majority of Stafford's land is residential. Stafford has prioritized residential expansion over commercial development, increasing demand on schools without the tax base to support them. As citizens, we've done the research, but now let's take a step back and compare. How does Stafford stack up regionally and statewide in education funding, and what impact does that have on student achievement? Virginia school divisions receive less funding than national and regional averages. West Virginia, a state with a lower cost of living and fewer economic resources, spends more per student on public education than Stafford County. This raises a critical question. How can we expect to compete regionally when we invest less in our students than a neighboring state with fewer financial advantages? Neighboring districts invest more. Why not Stafford? Investment in schools directly correlates with student success. More funding equals higher SOL pass rates, lower dropout rates, and better college career readiness. Let's take a brief look at Stafford County Public Schools' per pupil spending outcomes. We spend $13,768 per student. During the 23-24 school year, our reading pass rates were 71% across all grades. Now, let's take a look at Falls Church City. Now, for the sake of example, Falls Church City spends nearly twice as much per student, $23,673 versus our $13,000. Falls Church reading pass rate is 92%. Let that sink in. 71% versus that 92%. The gap in funding results in lower academic outcomes. How much we spend matters. Our research as citizens concludes Stafford's current funding model is failing. Without action, student achievement will continue to decline. Investing in schools is investing in the county's future. Stafford must act now to fully fund education. We have prepared a nine-point action agenda that offers solutions for sustainable, long-term school funding. So each board member should have a three-page document that has our full nine-point action agenda. And so I'll just give a brief overview of each action point, and then we'll wrap up. Action one. We want you to fully fund the superintendent's $49.6 million budget to stabilize school operations. Protect student services and special programs, retain teachers, and ensure livable wages for support staff, and address deferred maintenance and safety concerns. The school board must go beyond proposing a budget. They must fight for it through public advocacy, negotiation, and collaboration with the Board of Supervisors. Mrs. Patricia Healy, has years of underfunding led to the fiscal challenges we face today, including declining student achievement and deteriorating buildings? Action two. Conduct a comprehensive study and annual stakeholder surveys to identify citizen priorities for school funding, guide budget decisions, and strengthen funding advocacy with data-driven insights. The school board must move beyond informal feedback and word-of-mouth by conducting comprehensive studies and annual stakeholder surveys to guide budget priorities. Dr. Sarah Chase, how's the school board ensuring school funding decisions are based on real, data-driven insights rather than assumptions? Do we have data that reflects the perspectives of our retirees and taxpayers that don't have children in Stafford County? Or is it just word-of-mouth? Action three. We want you to invest in community advocacy by allocating resources to a targeted outreach campaign that educates families, commuters, taxpayers, retirees, and students on the budget process and highlights public education as a key economic driver for Stafford County. Stafford is a commuter town with many residents disengaged from local policy. A proactive outreach campaign must educate taxpayers on how school funding works and its long-term impact. Mrs. Susan Randall, can citizens ask for a commitment to educate the public about the budget process and not rely solely on grassroots advocacy? Action four. We want you to strengthen the school board and Board of Supervisors' joint working group into an action-oriented task force that directly addresses Stafford County's school funding crisis and delivers solutions through strategic planning, accountability, and measurable outcomes. The joint working group must shift from discussion to action, delivering measurable outcomes that are publicly tracked. Quarterly meetings are too slow. The urgency of budget shortfalls, teacher retention issues, and inflation-driven cost demand buy monthly or monthly meetings to maintain momentum. Citizens see no clear outcomes from this group. Public progress reports, measurable deliverables, and accountability metrics must be established. Mrs. Patricia Healy, what work can this group share with citizens that you are most proud of? Action five. Adopt a joint resolution between Stafford County Public Schools and the Board of Supervisors for a multi-year funding strategy that increases local education funding, including a one-time allocation to address past funding gaps and inflation, and establish a fiscal formula based on enrollment, inflation, and new business revenue to address long-term financial stability. A formal agreement between the school board and Board of Supervisors ensures consistent, predictable education funding instead of reactive year-to-year budgeting. Mrs. Maureen Sigmund, what previous efforts can be shared with citizens that have led to an increase in local funding for Stafford County Public Schools? And how can this joint resolution create a multi-year funding strategy that ensures long-term financial stability? Action six. We want you to engage with the Stafford Economic Development Department and the Economic Development Authority to establish an agreement with cybersecurity, data centers, and logistic businesses for investment in local public schools. High-growth industries like cybersecurity, data centers, and logistics directly compete with education for talent. Yet Stafford EDA attracts businesses with low taxes and incentives without requiring investments in schools. If strong schools are a part of Stafford's business attraction strategy, then businesses must financially reinvest in public education. The school board must formalize a partnership with the Stafford EDA and the Stafford EDD to advocate for school funding as part of economic development planning. Ms. Alyssa Halsted, does the board feel empowered to seek a formal funding commitment from the Stafford EDA and the Stafford EDD to ensure business invested in Stafford also invest in our public schools? Citizens believe this is achievable. How will you make this happen? Action seven. Establish a formal partnership between the school board and planning and zoning departments to integrate school capacity and infrastructure needs into land use planning, ensuring sustainable development that supports public school infrastructure alongside residential growth. Stafford's residential zoning outpaces commercial development, increasing student enrollment without adequate tax revenue to fund schools. The school board must work with planning and zoning intentionally to ensure school capacity projections are factored into zoning decisions and prevent school overcrowding. The Three-R Plan must be integrated into Stafford's long-term growth strategy to fund school improvements in alignment with development trends. Mrs. Patricia Healy, how's the school board collaborating with the planning and zoning department to ensure responsible growth planning and the prevention of school overcrowding and alignment of capital improvements are aligned with future enrollment needs? Two more actions left, I promise. Action eight. Oh, I forgot to click. Action eight. Propose an amendment to an existing bill or introduce a new bill to the Virginia General Assembly for consideration during the first scheduled adjournment in 2026 addressing Full Cost of Competing Adjustment, COCA, funding for teacher and support staff compensation. Stafford's rapid growth surpasses Manassas and Manassas Park, yet they receive full COCA while Stafford does not. High-paying industries like cybersecurity and data centers are increasing competition for teachers. Without full COCA, Stafford struggles to retain and recruit educators. Expanding COCA has been done before. Stafford should be next. This is about fairness, not taking funding from other districts. Mrs. Maya Guy, what specific lobbying and advocacy efforts have the school board and Board of Supervisors undertaken to secure full COCA funding for Stafford County? And last but not least, action nine. Unite all Planning District Eight COCA recipient counties and NOVA school districts as a joint resolution to remove COCA caps, secure legislative sponsorship, and make COCA cap removal a state budget priority to address current labor costs and inflation. COCA caps fail to adjust for inflation, making Stafford's teacher salaries uncompetitive. The cost of living has skyrocketed in Stafford and Northern Virginia, yet COCA caps remain outdated, preventing fair teacher compensation. A joint resolution with other Planning District Eight school divisions strengthens Stafford's case for full COCA funding and makes cap removal a statewide priority. Dr. Warren, what past actions has the board taken to collaborate with Planning District Eight school divisions to advocate for removing COCA caps? Have any of our state legislators shown interest in sponsoring these efforts? Seaback will continue advocating for sustainable school funding. The school board must take action now to address funding gaps. This is election year for multiple districts. Citizens are watching to see how school funding is prioritized this budget season. We must invest in education or potentially risk losing public trust and long-term economic competitiveness. Thank you for this opportunity, and we welcome your questions and comments.
Thank you very much, all of you, and Dr. Hunter for the presentation. I'm sure we have a lot to say. I'm going to start with Ms. Halsted, so I don't forget her. Do you have anything you'd like to say or? Do you have anything you'd like to say or ask, Ms. Halsted?
Actually, I'm just thank you. That was probably one of the best and most informative advisory committee reports, just in terms of really the issues to wrap our minds around as we head into this. So I'm going to keep my comments short, but thank you so much for all the time and energy and effort you guys put into helping us make Stafford better.
Thank you. Ms. Randall?
I don't have much to add, but I do really, I think the first page is probably the one that makes your eyes kind of bleed when you see 117th place. I really just, that's just so disheartening and disappointing. I would, I hope, of course, we had an approved budget calendar that would have included a meeting with the Board of Supervisors. That didn't happen. And, you know, we have deadlines that we have to meet for them, and we have met them. I would hope that we can get this calendar moving in a positive direction with the meeting with them sooner rather than later. It just, if we don't have the opportunity to have a conversation soon, like I said, for both the CIP and the budget, it's just a little disheartening. So I know every year we put together a strategy. I know I'm very lucky that I have a cooperative supervisor that listens and tries to work with us, and I hope that we'll be able to continue to engage in a positive way regarding taking care of our little learners. So thank you very much for this. It's very informative, and we have some marching orders. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Healy?
Thank you. I'm just glad we didn't have to pay you all for doing that report, because this, this is
This time.
This is, seriously, this is more comprehensive than contracts that we have issued and spent tens of thousands of dollars on. So I really appreciate your time, your committee's time, and I have to say I miss being the liaison, but we take turns. But thank you for doing this. I think, I think we do have a crisis, you know, here in the county, and it's really going to be up to the, the community supervisors, but, you know, they report to the community. And we can certainly sing the song and, you know, do the advocacy, but it's, it's going to, it's going to be a tough decision because there are a lot of competing interests here in Stafford. But, you know, when you look at the number of students that we have and, and the impact on them and, and what's happening, I think you have put it very graphically here, and this will, this will help us to, to make the case, you know, how, how short we are. But I also think we need to have a longer-term vision and not just pulling up, but where do we want to be? Because back in the day, Stafford was very proud of its place, you know, in education, and, and we, we, you know, we had, you know, it was a different time. It was a different time, and we had new buildings and we had, you know, seasoned, you know, staff, and now we're, you know, we have, we have more challenges. But I, I think we, we have the guidance of a, a new superintendent who is, you know, has a great vision, and I think with, with his vision and working with, you know, with your advisory committee and with the community, we, we should be able to, to make our case. So thank you. Thank you. Seriously, this is an amazing report. And I mean, I, I just looked at the slides now, so I'm, I'm looking forward to reading it. I may not even wait till Sunday afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Healy. Ms. Irish, did you have any questions or comments?
I do not.
Dr. Chase?
Yeah, I'll just echo what everybody else has said about thank you so much for the work. I do want to make sure you all, everybody did hear that, that Delegate Milde did bring COCA up, and it was voted on, and it went down. But he worked very hard to get it on there, and all of our representatives did vote in favor of it. It went down by one vote. Yeah, oh, just.
One of our representatives voted against it, which is why it didn't even get out of the committee.
Gotcha. Okay.
Unfortunately.
Unfortunately, yeah. But, but at the same time, I absolutely agree, 117th in funding is, is not enough. But I do, given that we had several wonderful principals come up, we are extremely lucky in Stafford in the staff that we do have, and we do have many, many wonderful principals and teachers and staff who help make 117th not as bad as it could be, but we would certainly like it to, the funding to improve. Thank you.
Dr. Warner?
First of all, it's such a pleasure to work with you, Dr. Hunter, and I, I think that this is one of the most comprehensive roadmaps that we've ever seen in any committee. And I think that I love the way you've integrated all the different partners that we have in the community. It's not just the Board of Supervisors and the school board. It's not just the state government. It's the EDA, and it's the economic development, because education is a driver of economic development, and it's time that we funded it accordingly. So I appreciate the marching orders, and I will continue to advocate and do what I can do. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Guy?
Thank you. I think this was a fantastic presentation. I guarantee you, this will be on my social media. I'm probably going to clip your presentation and put that on my social media as well. And I'm not going to say any names, but the one representative of Stafford's that did not vote for the COCA, I do have a meeting scheduled with them next month, and I hope to make my case so that if Milde brings it back, hopefully, you know, it can make it out of committee this time. I thought this was fantastic, and I may have questions, but if I can contact you later, just to get more insight, because my, my brain is thinking now. So thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I love this. I've actually gotten probably halfway through the, the report, and I'm looking forward to reading the full action steps as well, again. I think my question is, since this is, you know, the property of a citizens budget committee and not the school division or the school board, are you sharing it with the Board of Supervisors, with our delegation in Richmond, you know, essentially with the other people that you've called to action in this so that, you know, they're aware that this is a public, you know, ask, and that we can all have conversations having read and heard the same information?
Yes, I would like to respond. I have actually tried to reach out, the committee has tried to reach out, and it has been varied responses as far as the willingness to hear the citizens' perspective, but we're going to continue to maneuver through the bureaucracy and push through, but our plan is to extend our advocacy, and so we are definitely working towards, moving towards advocacy at the state level, and we also want an opportunity to share our perspective as citizens with the Board of Supervisors and the various groups with Economic Development Authority. But it hasn't been as welcoming with some groups. I'll be very honest.
Well, thank you for all of this. This is a lot to digest, a lot to think about, but so much of the, you know, I felt like I was going through and I was screen grabbing, like, paragraphs, because again, social, for social media, for the, like, the quotes that I want to use later, it's so well researched and well thought out, but also, like, easily, yes, very digestible and kind of into layman's terms, because that's kind of the hard part. I mean, budget is complicated enough as it is, but to put it into language and, you know, graphics that, you know, anyone can, can understand and visualize is super, super helpful to me, but to everybody in the community as well. Because you're right, it is not just, you know, currently school-connected people. You, with all this growth, we know that we have families here that are not school-connected yet, that should be aware of kind of the journey we're on here, and then the people who are no longer school-connected and remember kind of the good old days, might be a little disheartened to hear the direction that we've been going and be more eager to help. So I am really, really looking forward to, you know, the mileage this presentation will get for our community. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, can I ask if the other members of this committee could stand and be recognized?
Thank you all so much for the work you've put into this, and will continue to do for the, for the rest of the term, so we are very glad to have you on our team. Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone. With that, this special call meeting is adjourned. We'll take a brief recess, and then we'll reconvene for our work session in the back. A second. Any discussion? Anyone want to, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye, Alyssa.
Motion to approve the agenda?
Aye, guys.
Second.
Any discussion?
Let's do it.
Okay. All on favor of the agenda?
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Discussion of 2025-2026 bell schedule tiering. And I know they want to get through the presentation on this, and then we can save our questions for the end.
Okay.
Can I kick us off?
Yes.
Okay. So tonight, we are here to provide you some information on an elementary school bell tiering option. We, as we continue to look at transportation and how we can continually improve, this is an option that has come forth that we'll share with you tonight, that we feel like really gives us some opportunities with some minor adjustments, really make some significant improvements to our transportation, on-time delivery, on-time pickup and delivery. And, you know, if we continue to do things the same way, we're not going to get the improved results, so we do find this as a way that we can have some of that improvements. Really appreciative of Mr. Greg Mackey and his work in transportation, his work with staff to put together some of this plan tonight, or this whole plan for tonight. And so looking forward to sharing it with you tonight, and we'll, we'll be happy to talk through the next steps, but I think you'll, you'll appreciate hearing from this and how it's going to help us to improve our transportation efforts. So Mr. Fulmer's here, along with Greg Mackey to present.
I'm going to kick it started, but, or get us started, but just thank you, Dr. Smith, for kicking us off, and also want to thank Mr. Mackey for being here this evening. Him and I are going to tag-team this and cover a lot of these slides together. So first, also with this kind of being our, one of our last few meetings, we're welcoming Mr. Wilkotsby starting us, but just want to take a minute to thank Greg and Mr. Mackey for all the work he's done over the last several months. Has done a really phenomenal job, and you'll kind of see as, as him leading that team down there of what we've kind of been able to push out of that department and some of these recommendations for improvements. So why, why should we look at tiering the elementary schools? Ultimately, as, as Dr. Smith said, Dr. Smith mentioned, we need to adjust if we're going to expect to improve. So we know we can't keep our current schedule the way it is if we want to see improvement. We believe that with the tiering of the elementary schools, we're going to have more on-time buses. With that on-time buses, we're going to have improved communication. The less delays that we have means that our dispatch department and our transportation staff are not overwhelmed with trying to keep up with them, so they're going to be able to stay on top of those communication notifications. It's going to allow us to have more efficient use of our staff, and with that efficient use, it's going to provide flexibility for our route coverages. And with all of this, we're able to maintain the current order of our schools, so we're not having to flip-flop our bell schedule tiers, we're just splitting our elementary school tiers.
All right, so I'll slide into this, talk about this slide itself. So looking over the window, as we started pulling this data together to look at some the background story, we look at the window between November 1st up through December 19th, and during that time, there were 865 absences. That's a combination of drivers and also attendance. And when you look at that, that, the attendance really, with our current process, if an attendance out, we need to have two people on every single bus. So many times, that causes us to take a driver off another route and cover their route in order to provide that extra set of hands. Overall, that average is thought to be just under 29 kids, or 29 people every single day, with a peak of 38 on December 6th, and that definitely makes it challenging. It's not just the 865, though. Every one of our drivers and their runs, they have at least two different levels, if not three. So it, it kind of, it builds up. And so those 865 equated to 2015 bus coverages. And so that's whenever you think of dispatch and the workload that they have, that's where it's all building up along the way. So then you look further into just the elementary level, that ranges anywhere from 36 to 75 runs being covered on a daily basis, just in the elementary level. And we'll explain next on how that kind of, why that matters in different areas.
I want to emphasize, too, this is something we've talked about as a team. We want our staff to feel like they can take leave when they need to take leave. So it's not about avoiding leave for our staff, but we need to be better equipped to handle it when they do take leave. And right now, we're operating, which we'll see in a few minutes, to basically at 100% utilization. So as soon as one driver is out, that triggers us into where we have to have bus coverages and double runs.
So this next chart is usually the chart that affects you, because you hear about the delays, and you, it all carries back. So the same window of time is pretty much being looked at. Actually, this is 11/20 to 12/19, but you can see where the delays are located, and a majority of those delays are located or arrive on the elementary level, and up to 18 delays in a single PM shift. And so you can imagine how that stockpiles, and if you're delayed on the, the elementary level, typically, when you look to the right of that, you see the middle school, you'll find that there are higher delays there, too, because once you fall behind in that, the elementary level, it builds up over there as well. So just a little bit of a process and some numbers on how that all plays out. It's nothing new. Actually, before the pandemic, there was actually a trial with some tiering that took place between Park Ridge and Wyandotte Creek, and it was very successful, and the schools loved it and found that things were much more on time. But then COVID came, and we changed around the whole tiering a couple different times, actually during that process, and it just kind of went away. But it was a very successful pilot whenever this took place at those two schools. Very similar format.
So I want to share some data on just our mainstream drivers. So our general mainstream drivers, so this does not include our special needs routes, it does not include our early childhood special education, it doesn't include some Kenty Vento students that we transport. This is just looking at our mainstream, because that's ultimately where we have to make sure it balances when we look at our elementary school bell tiering. So on the, the chart on the left, it shows we have 171 total drivers for mainstream right now, and some good news is we've actually probably added a few more since we created this, five or six that have come out of class and are out on the road. But what we show in, in the bigger chart on the top right is, in that first tier, which is high school and our Rock Hill Elementary School, it's a total of 157 routes. Well, we need 100, or we have 166 drivers plus the substitutes, but that equates to, we're using 95% of our drivers on those routes. But if you look in the far right column, we know that we have at least 15% driver absenteeism each day, and so all of a sudden, that takes us to, we're short drivers because of those absenteeism, and we would need 107% of our drivers. That's our kind of new utilization. So being at 100% or above in this instance is not a good thing. We want that number to be lower, so it means we have more drivers available to help coverages. Elementary school, even before we have a driver absence, we're at 99.4%. That doesn't include high school runs that are so long that they can't help on the elementary school run. So we already have, so we're pretty much, we are like dead even at 100%. So we do have some planned double run just because of how short the routes are, but ultimately, we have a driver for every route if they are all here each day. But back to the second column, we're at 113% utilization. Once again, not great to be over 100. The higher, the, above 100 we get, the worse shape we're actually in. So that's accounting for the absenteeism. Middle school, we're a little bit better, so I've always shared that's our Middle school, we're a little bit better. So I've always shared, that's our, our kind of least volume tier, least number of students and buses required. So we have about 140 runs there. We would operate with full efficiency at about 84%, but with our absenteeism, more about 95, 96%. And I do want to also add, this does not include if we have attendance absences and then drivers have to cover four bus attendance. So trying to look at just drivers and then the impact that the absenteeism has. So with that, jumping right in, a proposed schedule and what the adjustments are. So we would split our elementary school into two tiers. One that we'll call Tier 2A, one that is Tier 2B. Tier A would be 8:15 to 2:45. Take out Rock Hill for a minute, all of our current elementary schools that would bump up to Tier 2A, it's only a 10-minute difference in what they have right now. Pretty insignificant difference, but we are going to get feedback from parents to get some information and let them share their thoughts on it. Rock Hill is currently on our high school tier, which if you go back to that utilization, having Rock Hill on that high school tier is bumping them right up to that threshold where they're exceeding that 100% mark when you account for absences. So we need to shift Rock Hill back off the high school tier so we're not playing catch-up immediately after the high school tier. The good news is, is I think a lot of the community, I think Ms. Hila, you can attest to this, is we've heard a lot from the Rock Hill community that they would prefer to bump back a little bit later. Because of the length of some of those Rock Hill routes, we do pick up kids at 6:00 AM for Rock Hill. And so we've kind of heard from the community there that they would like to be pushed back. So in this case, it actually works in our benefit. It's a 45-minute difference for them to shift to the 8:15. And then we would have the Tier 2B, which would start at 8:45. So once again, we're still going to have high school. We'll have Tier 2A, 2B that are elementary school tiers and we would have middle school at the end.
Before you slide on, you can look up there and see some of those comparisons. Like Wide Water, for example, is on the Tier 2B. And if you look on the Tier 2A, you'll be able to find, like Hampton Oaks is over there. If you were to look on the right-hand side, you'll find Hartwood under the Tier 2B. On the left-hand side, you're going to find that's where Rocky Run is located. There are, I'm calling assistive schools, support schools strategically looked at so that, hey, we're on Tier 2A and we have a driver that's out, let's look to see who on Tier 2B can support. Maybe they have a shorter run on Tier 2B and their routes are closer to the school. They could come over and support the Tier 2A side, providing, you know, hopefully minimal to no delays at all for our kiddos. And so that's how every school that's up there on the left or the right, they're strategically identified to support.
So excluding Rock Hill, the biggest shift we'll see is our, our schools shifting to the Tier 2B, which would be that 20-minute shift. What that does, as Mr. Mackey mentioned, is it does provide some drivers now will be able to help on high school, both elementary school tiers and a middle school. So on those shorter routes. So what is that, what does that do for our utilization? So the same chart in the top right, now in the bottom right, you'll see what those impacts are when we're able to split those shifts. So we move Rock Hill off of the high school run and that now moves us to 87% if all are, are almost 88% utilization, if all of our drivers are here. And even if we account for all of our driver absenteeism, we're right at 100%. So we should actually be in pretty good shape at our high school routes. Except for our really extreme days and some of the flu that we had going around. Still, as I, as I hear from, going around the county, but a few weeks ago, was really going through some of our bus drivers and attendants as well. And you'll see the impact it has on our elementary school, two split tiers. Now where we were at 99 and 113%, we're in that 50, 55, and then jumping up to the 65%. Full disclosure, we're not going to have all 170 bus drivers running each, both tiers of elementary because some of the routes are too long. But what that allows you to do now is by shifting some of those longer routes to Tier 2B, right now, they're trying, like, we, they can only do one elementary, but we have some elementary schools or some bus drivers that can do both schools now. So it frees up and it gives some extra time for those longer runs, like a Wide Water, that Brookpoint or North Stafford High School bus can finish. It now has a longer bell gap to get to those students and get them to school on time.
Are we allowed to ask questions at the end?
Okay. Now, not, not a whole lot of change on our, on our middle school with exception. You'll see the colors change, percentage change just slightly. And that's because with this consolidation, our adjustments are actually able to consolidate some of those routes. So you'll actually see the total number of routes went down a few. And also what's not caught up, caught here is we actually think that it's going to free up 13 drivers, which can now be contracted substitute drivers. Or just help shorten some of those routes. We'll also be able to shift to maybe some of our other tiers or like our early childhood special education.
I'll talk about a couple of the general improvements. Overall, looking at improved on-time runs. And if we do have one of those times and we'll have several people out, we will have more options to pull from instead of especially the elementary level where we are already at 100% capacity. And where do you pull from without creating delays? Better staff allocation, as Chris mentioned. We, looking at it, we're able to go from 166 assigned drivers and routes to 153. That, of course, our numbers are always moving in the counties. That's just a rough number, but it's still pretty significant that it can provide that extra support. And then the enhanced student and family experience, fewer delays and better communication, which I think is the goal for everybody as well. Special education, it's not into this consideration as of right now. However, the idea is our, our schools that have kiddos who are riding to one school, it's going to provide more flexibility where right now, they're all showing up at one time, where now we can also stagger how they're supporting our schools. So we will actually have more support. The team is getting ready to actually lay that out to show that, but we're confident that it's going to provide more flexibility just having this, that tiered effect as well for getting our special way of kiddos to school on time.
And because we're freeing up some of our drivers from our mainstream, it will help if we need to ship those over to the special needs coverage.
So again, just looking more at impact by school, freeing up bus staff, reducing delays, realigning Rock Hill is a big plus. Middle schools, no schedule changes, but if our elementary level is on time, then we will have less delays also in the middle school tier. And then for the high schools, no schedule changes. But again, removing Rock Hill, that's nine buses that are coming off, or that would come off, which provides that extra support for the high school level. So it will reduce the delays there as well. And early childhood, the goal is to hopefully be able to allocate some of the 13, to have less or more buses to be able to support. And then maybe get shorter routes for some of those kiddos that are pretty long.
I'd love to be able to shift over kind of dedicated contracted substitute over to our early childhood because one of our biggest issues we have is as soon as a driver or attendant is out on early childhood, it's a trickle-down. So if North Star is behind or we have a breakdown on the North Star route, then getting to Rising Star creates a significant delay for them. So we're working on having a driver basically on-call that can jump on. We have a bus ready with already that has the specialized seats for our pre-K, early childhood kids. So they can jump on that bus and get right over to Rising Star. So even if there is a delay, we know it's not going to be an hour delay. Maybe it's just a 10-minute delay. So we did start to do our due diligence and look ahead to what it would look like in 2026. Because we know 2026 looks a little bit different than 2025. So Greg and the team started mapping out what, what will we do with elementary school 18 and 19. And right now, and so this is all subject to change and we need to see how redistricting kind of shapes up and, and what that final redistricting is. Because as we mentioned, the way we pair our schools depends on the boundary zone. So we could see some other shifts. Right now, just some high level, we would expect 18 to be, to fall into the 8:45 Tier 2B. Elementary school 19 would fall into the 8:15 Tier A. And then the only change we right now foresee as far as existing schools that we're putting into place for next year that we would have to potentially shift the following year is Stafford Elementary School would shift from Tier A to Tier 2, Tier 2B. I want to mention, one of the things that we're looking at is for 19 and how, having them on Tier 2A, how it would align with our Brookpoint High School arrival and dismissal with the car riders, maybe it would be better to have them on the Tier 2B. So it's something we're looking at right now to explore, but we need to see how elementary school redistricting finishes. So this is just kind of a visual of what I just explained on, on where they would slide into, noting that for, that following year, two years from now, if Stafford L falls into that Tier 2A, if they have to shift to Tier 2B, it would be a 30-minute change for them. But we're trying to minimize as much change as possible.
And this is just to show that this is the routers at work. And it all started with a map you see on that wall over there where they started looking for those supporting schools and where it made sense. And then from there, looking at every single one of these routes and really trying to dig into which, which combinations make the most efficient use of our staff and our, our buses that we have and putting those together. And then from there, they put them into the sandbox and chide out from it. So, but it was a team effort to pull together and I, I thought that picture was awesome because it just shows it didn't just happen. There was a lot of effort that went into it behind the scenes as well.
So real quick timeline, we wanted to introduce this to the school board and then obviously publicly to the community. We also want to get feedback from the community. So we'll shoot that out to our PK, our pre-K, up until our fourth graders that will, looking at, you know, K through five for next year. Send it and did get some feedback from them, you know, by kind of school site. Let them know like, hey, here's the projected schedule, what it would be for next year. Let us know what your concerns are or, or if you're in favor of it. We also want to send out a survey to our elementary school staff, make sure they're fully aware. That goes out about a week later. So the principals have a time to talk to their staff about it. So we'll provide this information. We actually, Greg has already kind of provided this presentation with our elementary school principals. And they were all 100% in support of it. Like everybody, hey, if it fixes our on-time arrivals and dismissals, everybody supports it. So we'll leave that open for a few weeks and close the survey on March 7th, the parent community one. And then we want to analyze those results and kind of finalize. We want to share that with the school board at the March 18th meeting that we definitely want to move forward. And then after that, we would communicate out to our families what the start times would be for next year. Unrelated to our start times is we need to get that done before we start to roll out our opt-in survey for next year. We want to survey, or a selection, I should say, of 100% of our elementary school student, or sorry, our, our K-12 students and pre-K, early childhood. So that's going to be open for about three weeks and then we're going to close in, close that kind of selection survey form. And then we're going to work with our schools and central office to finalize all of that. So we know we're going to have some holes there. We want to get to close to 100% parent response there. We know we're not going to get there, but just because they don't respond to that selection form doesn't mean we're going to just not route them. We need to work with the principals. They know what families always ride the bus, what communities always ride the bus. We'll fill in the gaps and then we'll give that data back to the schools and then we got to then fill whatever gaps are left. And that, well, we did this several years ago and we actually called every family to make sure we had every kid accounting for what their selection would be. And so that will go through kind of the month of May and then we're going to roll right into routing. You know, Greg's team has already built all of these route packages. That's how we know it'll work. They've gone through and built it in the system and know that the times work. So really, it's going to come down to, we have to assign students to actual routes. They know the, the system really well now and are kind of ready to rock and roll. So as soon as, as soon as they can, they're kind of antsy, ready to start moving forward. That's it.
I was going to start with Alyssa so I don't forget her.
I did forget.
Yeah. Alyssa, did you have any questions or comments?
I forgive you for, I forgive you for saying that, Maya. I'm a little slow picking things up tonight. So I apologize for that. I'm going to withhold most of my questions just until I can process. I actually don't mind any of this. I really, I really appreciate the effort that everyone put into trying to figure this out because wow. But the only question I did have was what we, do we think we'll ever get to a point where we can bring middle school to an earlier start time? To get them some relief on that late dismissal. That was the only question I had.
I think, I mean, I'll take that. I think I've heard from a couple of different board members about this and, you know, we had not planned to look at revising the entire package of, of start times from, or the order from high school, elementary, middle school for the upcoming year. I do think that takes a lot of community input and work if we're going to look at revising our entire start times. That is not something that I had kind of coming up.
I think what she was wondering is can the middle school start coming a little bit earlier?
I'm sorry, I understood. So can we just move the middle school up earlier? Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Yeah, and I would, I would say no. I, I not, and especially now with this schedule because as we bump our, we're, we're doing the tiering. So we need to keep as much of a gap between our Tier 2B for our elementary schools and the middle schools. So we're able to move our middle schools up, you know, 10 minutes, I think, two years ago from that original four, four o'clock dismissal. So they're currently at the 3:50, right? And so really, that's as soon as we can, we can kind of bump them until we've been overarching.
Thank you.
Maya?
This might not be the appropriate time to talk about it, but because you were talking about you're freeing up potentially 13 or however many buses. And I know you guys are always constantly recruiting for bus drivers. Does this mean that they will be able to be more buses available for field trips? Potentially?
Potentially, depending on if we free up more middle school. You know, if we have less on the middle school tier, we could do, we could start some of our field trips earlier if we don't have as many drivers. But right now, our field trips are really dedicated to be in the middle of the day between our middle school and then our high school dismissal, our middle school arrival and high school dismissal. So it doesn't really change that other than as we have additional flexibility and we have more on time, we could free up some of those trip drivers to help with those field trips. At least start them earlier than having to wait until maybe 10 o'clock. We could start them a little bit earlier for our high school and elementary school students.
Gabby, Lilian, do you have anything from a student perspective?
I mean, not really. I have a couple of questions, but I don't know if they're like the right questions. How, how do you think this is going to like affect the parents? Like in an emotional state-wise, like how are they going to react to changing the arrivals and furthermore, like creating that difference of a 30-minute? Like I feel like they might create a rise because, oh, my child's going earlier than eight other schools. And why is that? And I feel like that's just going to create a lot more tension.
I think I answered that as an elementary principal, right? Our kids can be assigned to runs for buses at any time. And a 20-minute variance at the worst is minor when it comes down to when they may show up when those buses are picking them up. And I don't see it to be that major of a change from the parent's side because when it shows up, everyone wonders, hey, is that bus showing up for me today at 7:45 or is it an eight o'clock run? You don't know. And so that 20-minute gap, it's kind of like, a little bit of that, how those, the dice are rolling. Hey, I guess I get the eight o'clock versus the 7:45. So for the parent's side, I don't see it being a huge difference because it's really not a gigantic chunk of time.
The other point that I might make to that is all of our, all of our elementary schools will open at least 20 minutes prior to their start time to allow students in in terms of, for a kiss and ride. And so just so when you look at those times, I know thinking about what times folks seem to get to work and those types of things. So even at the 8:45 time, our schools would be open for drop-offs at 8:25.
When, when we had Park Ridge and Wynden Creek on the tier and we switched it back to everybody at the same time, the people at Park Ridge wanted to stay where they were and the people at Wynden Creek wanted to stay where they were. So one was early and one was late. It didn't really matter. They loved where they were. So I, I think, as Mr. Mackey's saying, if our buses are going to be more likely to be on time, then I would think the parents, you know, would, would adapt and be grateful they're not, you know, out there waiting for a bus.
Yeah, I think most parents are going to be relieved that there's more consistency.
When you send the survey out, I would make sure to put into the, the heading why we're doing this and what we expect the outcome to be. Because, you know, that's, we're not just, you know, changing for change, but that there's been a, you know, analysis and that we fully expect that we're going to be able to, you know, provide better service, be on time and that this is part of it. So if they understand why we're doing it and that it ultimately should benefit the families, I, I think they'll be, you know, fairly comfortable. And, and I'm really glad to see Rock Hill. I've been asking for that for years and I never believed the answer that it was because it was too much traffic going in that one road because for twenty years we had both schools open and all of a sudden it became a traffic problem. So thank you for relieving that traffic issue, that non-traffic issue.
Well, they're still forty-five minute, you know, they're still half an hour apart.
It wasn't a traffic problem.
I I do want to thank you, Mr. Mackey. I know Moncur has missed you, but I do appreciate all the effort that you've put into transportation and trying to resolve some of these issues. And I think this is a great idea. I've heard great things from principals. The only thing I'm a little concerned about is if I think we should, do we really know, is it better to put elementary school nineteen and plan for it to be in a specific time slot? So we're not changing anything at the start of next year. So I know there's, what, we have forty-five minutes before from Brookpoint start time to elementary school nineteen. Is that enough or should we put them, start with them in the second tier? The two, should we, so so I'm just because I'd rather not change things.
Well, and I also to add on to that, it's, you know, the start of the high school, the start of the elementary school nineteen, but then also the middle school because there is that road, new road that they're going to be sharing. So I guess.
Yeah, I just, I think it really, it would be really nice to be certain of those times that we could, I don't know if we can analyze it before we have to make this decision.
And again, it was really.
Maybe just don't publish the time until we've had some time to think about it.
It was a really presumptive.
Or even make this thing done.
Thinking of what to do with the shifting of those times. Again, way ahead, you know, we don't, I don't make the decision also on redistricting, but the idea was it's a longer route, it's a more of a point, you know, wondering how that go decided later on. And so that was the reason to think that direction before. But again, I'm not making that decision. That's yours and trying to figure that out. So but it definitely could be work that direction. The most important piece would be you'd want to have both schools on alternating schedules so that Staffordell would be on the opposite time to to provide that support.
Right, just to.
So that they're not there. So that's the that's the biggest premise that I'd go with.
And I do think, I mean, we, I don't, I I agree. I don't recommend that we come out and say, this is when elementary school nineteen, I mean, your redistricting is not scheduled, we voted on it until May. So we just want you to know, we've been thinking about that. We have that in mind. We are planning ahead, but we're not ready to come out and say, absolutely, this is going to be the time. And we wouldn't plan to share that with the community in the survey because it really doesn't apply to anybody yet.
Right.
Yeah, my two concerns would be, like, I would hate that Staffordell would have to change twice. If we could, if we could mitigate that, I mean, I understand that no plan is perfect and if this is the cost of the plan, I guess, but that is, that's stressful.
Yet that's the only, for parents finding out that their their students' time is changing.
And I guess, like, did you look through, are there other schools that, not that, you know, any one is better than the other, but like how we landed on Staffordell versus?
It was proximity. Like, it's just where Staffordell is located and where the new school is located and.
Right, but we could have also had the same thing with maybe Rocky Run or Hartwood because like Rocky Run and eighteen are proximity. So did we think about, well, Rocky Run might switch instead of, not that that would be better, but like, I'm just trying to figure out what the process was and if we looked at other schools that, you know, we weigh the pros and cons and then this would be the best option or is it just?
For me, just thinking, I mean, until we've done the redistricting, I think it's all. Yeah, a lot of this is very speculative. I mean, it can change a lot if you're going to be having.
And I think that needs to be.
I can think of neighborhoods that could move quite a bit. So I would just not even, I mean, I would be clear that that there could be changes.
That was going to be my, like, next point is like everything, even, you know, every survey, everything we do between now and finalizing our redistricting needs to be with that asterisk caveat, italicized, highlights. This is a standard thing, you know. This is not, even this list is not set in stone after redistricting. We might decide, you know, schools need to.
I wouldn't say we might decide, we might need to.
Yeah.
It's not like some whimsical.
Well, we're just looking at this now, so this isn't, I mean, certainly it's something.
Subject to change based on.
And I do want to add, you know, because of redistricting, we're still another year away from that going into effect, even for our our schools listed here. So these these are the tiers in the schools that work for next year before we've added two new schools and before the redistricting. So it could be after redistricting, some of the other ones might need to shift too, maybe to to your point. We think that the biggest change we're going to see is in that Stafford L zone. But before we add elementary school nineteen, in order to really make this work and most effectively, we need Stafford L on that first tier. So even, we don't want to shift it to the second tier just for one year because we think it's going to work. It really, you need to have that sister school that it's tied to and it doesn't have that until nineteen. So we need them on the first tier to start for next year. But some of the other ones, depending on redistricting, might need to shift too. Also, keep in mind, students are going to be moving schools too, so they're going to have maybe potential changes.
So where they would have been a tier one, they're going to go to a tier two.
So the survey should show that the proposal is to either start at eight fifteen or eight forty-five. There's no assignment of schools at this time, but what we're looking at is for approximately half the schools to start at eight fifteen and the other half to start at eight forty-five. And then put their end time too, even though you would just, you know, add the time just so that that's.
Do we need any additional buses and we've got buses in the budget this year?
We do.
Yeah.
We got, I see you. There's twelve in the in the budget and then we're trying to try to supplement with one-time money. So it's still a challenge of trying to keep up with our replacement.
Right.
So the only other, I guess, concern I had or question was taking thirteen drivers off assigned routes and having them be essentially permanent subs. Is that going to create?
For a year until the new, when the new schools open, I assume we're going to need more buses and bus drivers than we have with this.
We need, you know, the, kind of like our, some of our teachers, we, the students generate the need for drivers and teachers. So we're not, we'll add a few hundred more students the next year, but really what's driving it is the years of adding students.
For the schools? We can open two schools and you have the same amount of buses and still be just as efficient? We're under pressure.
We'll, we'll look at it. There's going to be a shift, right? So instead of, you know, right now Staffordell has nine buses, next year they might only need seven or in in two years. So two of those buses are going to shift around, so.
Are we going to have any driver angst over losing a permanent route? Like, I don't want to lose drivers with this plan.
So a lot of the routes are staying the same, maybe there's some of the route pairing is.
No, I mean, for drivers that are no longer assigned to a route and they just kind of show up and we'll get told what they're driving, is that going to be a hardship for, could we lose drivers if they're not on a permanent route? Or are there drivers that are just willing to?
I'm sure we'll have.
Yeah, there's, there are some drivers who enjoy that flexibility. And so the one thought is drivers would also be brought into this for who is interested in being one of our contracted subs so that you can have that variety. Sometimes they don't want to drive that same route. So there's survey pieces to go along with that to match up. And then also to, this will help out a lot. This year, the the base rate for a driver is six and a half hours. Some of our drivers are up to eight hours or more because of picking up all the different runs and you name it. So the nice part is we'll be able to get this into the system really ASAP to start to put these into traversa to know exactly how long that they're anticipated to be to, then almost go into a bid based on seniority and anything else to earn those routes, right? And where they want to be. And and I think it's going to help a lot of people because they're going to know very clearly what their routes would look like. Compared to this year where it's a little bit of, I don't know, and hey, can you help cover? So it will definitely help out.
My other question was, and maybe this can't happen, when we go into redistricting, will we, when we look at our maps and and tweaks start to come in, will we be able to be reminded of like this neighborhood would be in this tier or? I I don't, what I'm saying, okay, here's what I don't want. I don't want anyone to say, well, you guys changed that and that messed up the tiering or like, how do we, how will we know? Or to not have us mess that up?
So I don't, I don't think, because our elementary school zones, we have a lot more of them and so it's some tweaks to the edges. It's not like high school where it's five massive zones and we had to turn it into six and so we had some bigger shifts. With this, it's, it's, when you have some shifts between schools, it's really like on your edges and you're and you're trying to balance them out. I don't think it's going to be as much of an impact, but a hundred percent, you could, you could take a neighborhood that's in the Falmouth Zone and we're going to ship them over into the Ferry Farm Zone and they're going to go from one tier to the other. That potentially, you know, could happen, but I don't think we're talking thousands of of students or families.
Dr. Chase?
Yep. So I just wanted to clarify something you said, which is we do not have an attendant on every bus, right? We only have attendants on special ed buses.
Only on special ed buses, yes.
Okay, I just, I just wanted, in case people were listening and they're like, well, there's no attendant on my kid's bus.
It's been proposed, but we've never been able to.
No, I would absolutely love for us to be able to do that, but that's not happening this year or next year.
So in in talking about the opt-in schedule, we will have some folks who are new to the community. So how is that, what's the plan for, you know, if you have a kindergarten or rising kindergarten or you may not be around and you don't have other children already in the school system, you know, or people who've moved into the area and haven't had kids.
So we'll, when they're registering, we're going to have them, you know, complete that survey too. So they'll do that opt-in selection form as soon as they're registering or soon thereafter. And then we're going to have changes. So right now, our plan is our routes will be built, we're going to have them shared out with families and like last week of July. But we still have to get through the open house week. We're going to have some changes that are going to come there. We're going to have new students show up. So just like always, when new students arrive to the division, we're still going to obviously give them the opportunity to to do a selection form and we'll route them. We just always say, give us a couple of days or five to ten days, you know. Usually it's a quick fix, we get them maybe the next day even assigned to a route. It just depends on what changes we have to make to those routes.
Well, and I mean, I was here for the the transportation study that came out with all of COVID. And so I'm I'm very happy to see us actually considering doing some of what was recommended there in terms of this tiering. I hope it works. And I also want to say I appreciate and hope you all will continue in response to the board not allowing us to push you to overpromise, right? Like, I don't want us to be thinking that middle school could go earlier or this, that, or the other, and then we just have the community upset with us because we we promised something that we couldn't deliver on. So I hope this works and be interested to see what the community has to say when you send out the surveys and things like that.
Can can we get on a separate line, not necessarily the chart, but the longest bus rides, you know, the current longest, longest bus rides per school? And is, are we proposing the longest bus rides are going to be reduced?
Some of the ones that are longer are hard. I will tell you, it's it's the Marble Point, it's the, there are some Hartwood runs.
No, I'm just curious, do we, do we expect that there's going to be some efficiencies?
Not necessarily because of this tiering, maybe opening the schools and if your school gets a little bit closer, really, you might cut on a few minutes with ES nineteen being farther down Courthouse Road than Staffordell, but I don't think there's going to be significant impacts there.
So so we could, we're still in an hour plus for our longest runs. Well, at least if the buses are on time, I think people will be grateful.
And I'll, I'll point out.
And that's really what it is.
I think it's the reliability factor too, we can improve consistency.
Well, I think, I think that, you know, the reason we get, if if kids' teachers were late to their classrooms, you wouldn't hear as much. But when it becomes a factor that is affecting the parents, that's when you're going to hear something. And that's when we have heard stuff, is the hardship that is created for the parents and the reliability of, you know, either their childcare or their drop-off or, and, you know, in talking with the principals that I've been visiting, how many more car riders that they didn't anticipate, that they've had to deal with? And it's not gone down, even though the bus situation's gotten better, they're still doing the car riding thing.
Yep.
So can you remind me, where is North Star and Rising Star in the schedule?
They were on their own, they have their own separate buses, right?
Oh, oh, in separate, okay.
Yes.
They're dedicated.
Which the federal government pays for those buses.
Some of them, no.
Here's, I did.
They have.
Some of them are local, some of them have been locally funded.
Okay, so.
Blue Perfect.
So they were excluded from this analysis, but we want to provide additional buses. So then this will free up some buses, hopefully that we can reallocate directly to.
Okay, well, we're written and short on, we went from thirteen where we're like already planning them. But my other thing is, Mr. Mackey, we're describing a little bit and I'm, I guess, a little confused on the special ed piece of busing to these elementary schools. How is that going to be improved as well?
It's, number one is you're able to tier it. Right now, every bus is still flying to all the locations at the same exact time for the same arrival. So you're able to, I'm going to look at the Hartwood and Rocky Run piece right now, right? And so that's just, and I can speak to, like, Todd or as an assistant principal with those, so I can speak a little bit more, right? So that Hartwood side has the eight forty-five start and the Rocky Run. So the Rocky Run can drop off as early as seven fifty-five for their start. So that allows drivers were able to get their kids to Rocky Run and they're able to then at that point still have roughly fifty minutes of travel time from the time they drop off, if they're in the early part of that window, to be able to get out to Hartwood to support. And so the same drivers can work in both schools to be able to help out with it. Just gives a lot more flexibility.
That's true on the mainstream side and our special needs.
So so thirteen subs, like contracted subs could help if it's ten minutes, they could help those more uses for those thirteen.
About the timeline for the opt-in and closing of that?
Oh, yes. I'm a little concerned about, and I can understand, I do, but in knowing how, having our opt-in close on May first, I fear that's a little early. I understand that then the schools will kick in and do their part to make sure that a hundred percent parents are included. But I I I see it opening in April. I just think that with school not closing until the end of May, it might be just a little too soon for our parents to all respond. But that's just my thought.
Right, and we may not, but we may not have the staff to be making the phone calls after.
Well, I didn't say it was to the end of the year.
I mean, school's in for most of the second through the thirty-first anyway. I'm actually not super opposed to May first, like, I feel like some of it could be maybe concurrent where we're keeping the opt-in open, kind of like those of us who forget to pay our lunch balance. Like, we can, I get the reminders, but I still go, I'm talking about myself, but I still can go in and do it manually. I don't have to like report to the front office and bring my checkbook, right? I can still do it on my own. I definitely think it's our, in our best interest to make people opt one way or another before we lose them for the summer.
Oh, for sure.
And if they have to change over the summer because something happens, then we can do that. But to have everybody opted in before the end of May, I think is for the best.
I'd love to get some updates as the month between April eighth and May first about how much we're hearing. I'd love for us to be able to get some Friday updates on how that's going.
I'd like to get the redistricting decision made before we require people to opt in because it may have an impact, you know, on what school they're assigned to and whether they want to be drivers, driving their kids or whether they want to pass. I mean, there is going to be a.
It's like we have another year though.
Oh, I thought this was going to start now.
This is, but the redistricting.
Oh, the redistricting, oh, wow. Oh, then that'll be another opt-in.
Yeah.
So did they have to opt-in every year?
Well, that'd be for next year.
Yes.
Yes.
Next year, it's only opt-in every year.
Well, but still, there's going to be some people that are going to be effectively left districted or stay and, you know, that's. When is the redistricting decision in May?
The next week.
When?
May.
May what?
Your meeting in May.
May thirteen. We're going to do that next.
Yeah, I know I saw it was sometime in May, but is there, is there a magic about May first?
Really, oh, this May first?
Yeah.
No, we just wanted to provide adequate time to close it out because as someone that, what Ms. Sigmund alluded to, once we approach the end of the summer and we lose our, or the end of the school year, our ten-month staff go home, so we don't have them to help maybe contact families. And as you get to those last couple of weeks of the school year, just, you know, there's a lot going on with graduations and.
Right, field days and.
Yeah, and and honestly, the the bulk of our survey responses come the first couple of days that we send the survey out and then it dies off. We send reminders, we get a couple hundred more, but it really like dies off.
And I'm hoping that we're going to plaster our schools with like QR codes so that when families are in for that, you know, kindergarten moving up or the.
For field day and, you know, that's going to be later though.
Yeah, like all that stuff that that they can be reminded to scan and opt and.
Because it's going to be harder for us if they opt, if they forget to opt in and then they opt in in August, it's going to make it a lot harder for you than having maybe have to opt in a little bit.
I should say, it's a lot harder also for the, frankly, it's the high schoolers that is is most unclear. Elementary, I could tell you back to Moncur exactly which kids are our car riders and which ones are our bus riders right now. And I could give you that information in seconds. And I would bet that most of that's going to carry. And I could give you that information in seconds. And I would bet that most of that's gonna carry forward. It's the middle's four, and high schoolers especially, that are much harder to figure out for it.
And I think for high schoolers in particular, we need to remind families that, because I hear a lot, well, I'm gonna sign my kid up because I want them to have the option. If their car breaks down or if we have to swap and they don't remember, I guess, or realize that if they don't ride for two weeks, they're essentially dropped and then you have to get back on. It's not like you can just wake up one morning and send your kid down to the bus stop. But I think that reminder needs to be.
Needs to go over that.
There's gonna be, yeah, a lot of messaging around this and I kinda have mapped out a video where we talk about that.
I just said we need to make a video for opt-in. And if you guys didn't do it, I was gonna do it.
So because we need to make sure people understand that exact point.
The high schoolers are gonna need to know whether they have parking spaces. And they won't know that until later in the summer because some of the schools have lotteries to get the parking spaces, even though they have to pay for the parking spaces. I can't say, you know, my child may have a car and they may be able to drive, but if they don't have a parking space, they're gonna have to opt in. So we're gonna have to remind them, if you opt in and something changes, please, please, please tell us so we don't put you on our schedule. But that's, it's.
This is crazy.
And what?
When can we decide on the parking spaces? Can we do that earlier in the year? Because usually it's in August, isn't it? With seniors.
No.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They know by July.
Yes.
Well.
Okay, so two-parter. I know this was already answered, but I need clarification because I kinda forgot. Does the bus transportation, like with all the busing, rearranging, is that going to affect parent pickup and car riders?
Not at all.
I would like to address that because I know specifically for Brookpoint, like with, I know that there's a lot of like reconstruction and all that, so we kinda have to change our, our like road management and there's like crossguards and whatever. But with the busing, it makes it really hard for especially parent pickups because I'm a parent pickup. And especially in the mornings when the buses are going through and the crossguards do all their thing, it'll either be super emptied where like we can get in and get out or I'll be late five, 10 minutes from school when I'm literally in the school grounds. But because of the drivers, of the bus drivers and all of the cars being packed from that, now I'm late and it's my fault. But I was there.
We have the two routes. So when the elementary school opens, I think there's separate car rider and bus loops.
Oh, yeah.
And the only, at high school, hopefully that will, will do some improvement.
Well, she's saying at high school it's a problem with the car.
Yeah, but I think it's because of construction.
But you're also gonna have two entrances now.
So I think that once we get the construction done in those.
Right.
Yeah, so that will help with that as well.
Well, I don't know, it was probably about you, but when the, the fault of the traffic, it was just the volume.
Yeah.
With so many people driving.
And we, yeah.
And also you're losing kids out of your school.
Yeah. I was gonna, that's actually what I was gonna mention is we have that at all of our high schools now. Actually Stafford High might be the worst. And, but some of that is as we open up our new schools and we start to, like, those, spread out some of those students.
Yeah.
It'll take a couple hundred kids out of a high school, which means that's now less car riders going to.
Lesser?
Not the first year when all the.
Oh.
All of them.
Yeah.
So just to, just to clarify, so today really was about the elementary tiering. We wanted to signal that we, we heard what you said about opt-in. We are planning on opting in. That's a whole separate interdepartmental team that's working on all of the transportation recommendations. So we are planning on that. We are moving forward. Really around the tiering, we wanted to present this plan. You know, honestly, when this, when this proposal came forth, it was something that we know that if we continue to do things the same way, we're gonna get the same results. This is an opportunity for us to get better next year and not wait a whole nother year till 2026. And so wanted to bring this before you. We do wanna get community feedback. We are planning on sharing with families, here's where your tier would be, here's your, and get feedback. And planning on coming back and sharing that with you and the operational decision on March 18th. We're not asking for really a vote on this. It's just a 10-minute, 20-minute shift. We feel like we can do that. And so we wanna get the community feedback, come back with you, to you at the work session in March. Share that with you and share with you based on this. This is how we plan to move forward for the upcoming year. And you can see, kinda communicate with families accordingly.
Mr. Mackey, I have to give you a big round of applause. We really appreciate you and your team because I know this isn't a singular effort, but your whole team to put something like this together. Because one of the things, like Dr. Chase says, sometimes these pilot programs are piloted and then all of a sudden it goes away or it's piloted, but we never get the feedback from it. So when we saw the Park Ridge Winding Creek and it was called a pilot, but we never got anything after that. It just went away.
Well, there was that whole COVID thing.
Yeah, there's that too.
Different superintendent and then another different superintendent.
Another new superintendent. And here we are. And so I just want to thank the, for an out-of-the-box solution that's been piloted. And as you said, it was appreciated. So I really do wanna say thank you.
Well, it's also a recommendation from.
The transportation study. Yeah. Just a quick question because I don't know, and maybe Dr. Stempel knows. If a student gets a parking spot, does that mean we do not provide bus transportation for them?
Usually they come off the list. So if they opt in in May and they get a parking spot, they would be, their names would be forwarded.
Just a question of something that might wanna be considered.
We don't hold a spot for the occasion that they may need to ride the bus.
Right, that, that, what I'm saying is that we might wanna make clear that when you pay for that parking spot, you are giving up riding the bus.
And so that's a great point. And so historically, because we didn't know ahead of time, we were basically routing a hundred percent of our kids. And it was, we were a little late this year. I started working with Dr. Rice and now we're working on it for next year, which is when they sign their agreement for that parking spot, it's gonna basically say you're using your spot on a school bus. So we're gonna take that away from them. Now, if there's a circumstance where they need their car break, you know, whatever, we'll work with them to make sure they have a bus provided.
But, but just to, just to have some clarity there.
Yes, we need to think about, and I'm not asking for an answer now, but we need to think about the inclement weather. If we have snows, I mean, as a parent, I would not want my child, my, my young driver to be driving, you know, on a potentially dangerous road. Not that we would intentionally call school, but, but it's something to think about because we, we have had a tragedy in Stafford County based on weather and a student driver. So it just, if we, I don't know how we address it, but I would like to put that somewhere in the, in the works. You know, if a parent can't drive their child to school or, you know, that I, because I always felt that the buses were available. You know, that, that the students chose not to take advantage of that ride. But if we say, if you get a parking space, you can't ride the bus, then, you know, that's something I would like to, to think about. I don't wanna answer now.
How long has that been the rule about when you get your parking space, you no longer have your seat on the bus?
It has never really been an official rule, but typically after a few weeks, as they start to like audit those routes, historically, they would take students off the buses if they're not riding anyways.
They don't wanna ride the bus.
And I'm only asking because I had a kid who was driving their two siblings, but I know one of my kids was willy-nilly with the bus because they would argue and they would leave them.
I was gonna say.
My kids never walked back.
My kids will not run together.
I was just, you know, just asking.
Is that the same for the two weeks? Like, if you just don't ride for two weeks?
Yeah.
Like, how, no, how long has that been an official rule?
It's always.
It's been a long, long time, yeah. Sometimes it hasn't always been followed to a T, but we kinda tried to do all this.
I remember when we set that policy and it was because we don't want the buses having to make all these stops where there's no students.
Right.
Does that make sense?
It just wastes time for the other seventy kids on the bus.
It's kind of soft, especially in neighborhoods. Like, the bus isn't gonna not stop anymore if there's five kids and, you know, one of them is in.
At each stop.
And quite frankly, I don't know what happens if all of a sudden you show back up and, you know, that, they're not gonna, especially at the high school level, they're not really checking anymore. So they just, I don't, I don't know. Like, if your ride no longer has a, you know, the person who was in the neighborhood or you're leaving out tomorrow for a point, right? I mean, if you're the only kid and. That's what I mean. It's like in these neighborhoods, if they're used to picking up, you know.
Six kids.
And all of a sudden it goes to five and then a month later you're back up to six because you're no longer friends with the person.
Typically the drivers.
They took away the car privileges.
Yeah. A lot, if they've been on the route and they know the, know the kids and know the families or, usually we're not gonna just leave a kid on the side of the road. We're gonna pick him up and try to take him to school.
Please don't.
Okay.
All right.
All right, so moving on to our next topic.
Thank you, Ms. Mackey.
Um, this is.
Thank you so much and and your team.
When you get back from Monchur, let me know. I wanna come see you.
Sounds great. Thank you so much.
This agenda item is discussion of proposed changes to policy fourteen oh three dash P and proposed new regulation fourteen oh three dash R and identification of priorities for elementary school redistricting that will take place obviously in August twenty twenty-six. So there are kind of two goals for this discussion. One, and I think we heard a lot of, especially me in this past round of redistricting, where families refer to the policies and see a list in no particular order of about a million things we consider in redistricting. But we don't rank those. We don't really even specify how or why those are factors to begin with. So this gives us the opportunity to revisit that list and say, is this something we even want to list? Do we need to clarify how it's listed? Do we want to kind of change any of, any of the items on that list or whatever? And then also gives us an opportunity to talk about which priorities for elementary redistricting we would like staff to focus on, particularly when we are, before they bring us any scenarios. Because in the past, the county has brought us scenarios and then we're like, oh, well, this didn't look at this demographic data or this didn't factor in transportation or this didn't factor in travel time or stuff like that. And then they go back and they do it again and that's really complicated and stressful for families. So we thought that this time we might look at what are, have a discussion about what types of things we're looking for consideration on in the proposed scenarios that they bring us at the outset. And having what that conversation is and Lionel is of course here to hear that conversation so he can take that feedback back with him on, before we get our first round of scenarios and he can refer back to what our preferences are. So has governance talked about this at all yet? I know that.
It did not go to governance because it was a school board retreat item and a request. And we've already coming back to the full board in the work session. We brought it straight to the full board in the work session.
So are we starting with fourteen oh three R? Um, I, sure, we can start with R or R two. I had, I had, yeah. So.
Is Mr. White gonna give his presentation?
Does Bo Wright, do you prefer that we start? Does it make sense to start with the proposed amendment? Start with the policy, okay. Fourteen oh three P. There's a lot of changes here. It puts in a lot of our definitions. I for one thought crowded school percentage should be lower than a hundred and five percent, but we're, that's line thirty-one on page one. Because I feel like we talk about things in an effort to have a change in place before a school hits one oh five. I don't know what a better percentage would be, but I think one oh five is too high. And I know that my first couple of months when I had to do a redistricting, that was a drum I was beating. I don't like one oh five.
Well, why can't it be a hundred percent? Because like a hundred percent of this is at the lid, it's at the top. So why are we, I mean, I don't know. Maybe that's not, that's not educational logic, but that's common sense logic. A hundred percent is a hundred percent. So that would be crowded. If you're at a hundred percent, you're crowded.
Well, hypothetically, if you're at a hundred percent, you're okay. If you're above a hundred percent, then you're.
Then a hundred percent point oh one.
A hundred percent is essentially when you start talking about a crowded school versus.
I agree. A lot of things are too high. But if it's, we probably should define capacity utilization because if I were reading this, I would have a question. If you're a capacity utilization above or below or whatever number, what is that? I mean, I know, I know we have a definition for it and I know what it is. It's like based on the, the capacity and that can change. And I think that's important that people understand that the capacity utilization of a school can change depending on what the programs are on the, in there.
That's right.
I think that's, that's not at all three levels though, right?
No, it's just elementary.
Yeah.
Yeah. But some of the, you know.
But over half our schools are elementary.
Right. Some of the rest, some of the thinking behind a hundred and five or whatever you want it to be is that sometimes you'll have a large cohort that pushes through and maybe they're in the fifth grade.
Hmm.
So it could be something that's very temporary and then once it pushes through, the numbers pop back down.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know.
So maybe we need like a step one, step two. Like we have a conversation at a hundred, checking in with Lionel to say, oh, this, this is just a cohort, a situation versus starting a conversation at a hundred and five.
Right.
So maybe it's, maybe we split it and say, start the conversation at a hundred, checking in with staff to see what's happening so that we don't get to a hundred and five percent and all of a sudden, you know, we're having a November conversation where we need fifteen trailers or something, you know what I mean?
I agree. And I, I mean, just because we're at a hundred doesn't mean that we have to do something. It just means that we have to recognize that, that it's there. And maybe it's a trailer, maybe it's a five percent.
And maybe it's a.
Maybe it's a full, like, you know, a real redistricting as it were, but.
Exactly. But at least.
A superintendent's redistricting.
Yeah, but at least at a hundred percent, we're having a conversation. At a hundred and five, we're making a decision.
We're, we're defining uncrowded as a school with capacity utilization between eighty and a hundred. So there's a limbo between a hundred and a hundred and five. That's, we've got uncrowded school and then we've got crowded. I actually looked up crowded in the dictionary because, that was before. Because technically, maybe it's uncrowded up to a hundred, then over a hundred and below one oh five is crowded and overcrowded is one oh five. I don't know if that's what you're trying to say because, because that's been the, the standard approach is once you hit a hundred and five, it's almost mandatory that you take some action.
Yeah, and also, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, but just to give you like some perspective. Say if a school has a thousand seats, five percent of a thousand is fifty. So you're fifty kids over the capacity, just to give you a frame of reference.
Which is two classes.
Yeah, so about two classrooms. And again, it depends on.
Yes.
You know, the.
Where they, what grade they're in.
The distributions, right, exactly. Where, what grade they're in. So there are a lot of factors. But just think of five percent is not necessarily a huge number, but it starts to tell us there may be a shortage of classrooms.
But also taking what you give us with this, when we look at this number, we also have projections from you that show us in the next year, the five-year, the ten-year so that it's a reasonable conversation where we say, this isn't gonna get prettier.
Right.
So either let's have a conversation with the superintendent to do something and direct or we bring in the Learning Cottage's trailers or we do, like Ms. Sigmund said, a larger redistrict.
Right.
So I ju, I think we just need like our thresholds to be more.
I don't like emergencies. Like, I like, I like surprises.
Yeah, like it was a surprise to get that many trailers to come at us. So.
At once.
Yeah.
And another thing, just think about that one oh five is also the threshold for the administrative boundary change.
Right, that's what I was saying directly.
So, you know, this.
Yeah.
No, I didn't think that was a threshold. I thought they could just, the superintendent could just do it up to five percent.
Up to five percent.
It doesn't have to be at a hundred.
Well, no, it doesn't have to be at a hundred.
Right, I know, but he's just giving numbers, yeah.
I think it's just a definition of crowded school because on the other page, next page, it said the capacity utilization between eighty and a hundred percent is not. Off, you know, to offset space. So I think it's just.
That's uncrowded.
Yeah.
There's, but we got crowded and we got uncrowded.
I think it's just the five percent is the threshold.
We'll take a look at it. Let's, let's, let us take a look at it and see if we can't tweak it or rework that or clarify.
One oh five, I think the way I read it is one oh five is over cleared.
Correct.
On, um, page two, I just don't know why that's so strict.
Plus to one oh, it's just under one oh five and it's it could be crowded.
Because it makes sense to me, so maybe it shows up somewhere else that I'm not seeing.
Correct.
So greater than a hundred, less than a hundred and five.
Correct, that's one of the.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was just trying to understand.
Yeah, it got moved. It says in the, in the thing here that it got basically moved to.
Six sixty, seventy, seventy-five. Oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
I do like page three where they talk about.
And that makes sense. I'm like, why are we taking out what makes sense?
But I kind of grouped the different, I do like on page three where we've kind of grouped and explained the things we consider. Particularly that last one, stability, because we've had so many families saying, well, we were redistricted in elementary, so we shouldn't be redistricted in high school. And it doesn't.
Yeah, it doesn't work that way.
We just try to not redistrict.
I do wanna give credit though, like when we were doing the high school redistricting and we were brought the scenarios, but then we did public hearing and it was at the public hearing, not public hearing, town hall. It was at a town hall when I heard a parent say, a crowded north is not like a clouded, crowded four. crowded Ford, crowded Mountain View. So that made me think we needed to think about this differently. So hearing, you know, while we can give everything to you, maybe guidance wise, those town halls served a purpose when the parents started talking about something I hadn't even thought of. And so, I, I don't know where to, how to state that, put that, think that, but I, I do appreciate parent input in maybe driving a different scenario. And so I don't know how to put that.
Right, so the criteria we have here.
Right.
It's not saying that it's everything, because we can't think of everything.
Right, right, no.
And that's why, you know, it's saying, here are some of the more popular things that come up.
Right, sure, sure.
But it's not an exhaustive list of every possible thing that could be a criteria.
Yes.
So, Ms. Randall, actually, one of the things we put on the slide specifically in bold was, we want the community to provide feedback on all of the factors, which is why like community feedback isn't specifically a factor.
Yeah.
We want their feedback on all of the factors, and that's what's going to help kind of steer you in a direction.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Well, you got a shall in there. Oh dear. The following criteria shall be considered. I don't know if you want that to be a shall.
Should it be a may? It's a may.
Yeah, will is may.
It's a, there's a may here, I mean, maybe.
Will be considered.
Yeah, will be, because I think there does need to be some flexibility.
We need that just for you, Ms. Healy, for the shall.
Well, that, there's some times, there's some times when you need to use discretion. They tested you.
This is a will, not a shall.
I think.
You passed, you found a good job.
I think so.
The bullet that is giving me pause is actually the first one, proximity. And I think because my experience with redistricting and.
For your district.
For my district is.
That's super hard.
We are, we have not been assigned to schools that are close to student residences. We have had to redistrict to schools further away.
Spaces.
Because of, we haven't had the space in the school closest. So I struggle with having that be like, A, top priority, close to wherever. And I know that distance for mine, like the fact that I have kids going four miles instead of two miles makes the rest of you laugh, I get it. But, or, for the people in my district, it's important that they have to drive past a school to get to us.
I think it's important, it doesn't say closest.
I don't think it's priority number one, just because it's listed number one.
I don't think it's priority number one, just because it's listed number one.
And it doesn't say closest, right?
I was going to say, is reasonably close, like, do we have to?
Yeah, proximity doesn't mean near close, it just means the, you know, the location.
It just says close.
Well, it just says schools that is close to student residences and the receiving school has adequate space.
That's just one.
Yeah, but then four miles instead of two miles.
I'm just saying, like for me, I mean.
I know.
It was 100% change.
So I, I just give up, you know, don't, don't shoot me, but.
Why?
From my perspective, from my perspective, what I have seen is, is we have all these different factors.
Right.
And if somebody is unhappy with the proposed change, and they don't want their kid to go to that school, they will pick the factor that we ignore to make that argument.
Yeah.
So from my perspective, I'm pretty happy with, I don't feel any need to prioritize these. I mean, if you want to, you could take a random number generator and make sure you put them in some kind of totally random order so that it's less thinking that this is the order.
Alphabetical order if you choose.
Right.
And actually, the policy specifically says that they're not listed in priority order.
Oh, I know, but that doesn't mean that people read it.
Well, actually, let's put it in bold.
Right.
Seriously.
Yeah, yeah.
Would you, would you have here, the criteria are not presented in priority order, any or all may be considered, and the board reserves the right to blah blah blah.
Right.
It's almost like if you put it in alphabetical order, that it takes the whole conversation away
So you're for the will.
Right.
Away versus if you start with a list with proximity and end with stability, with theater in the middle, that maybe, you know, they just are.
Right, because you've got proximity, forecast, efficiency, contiguous.
Yeah.
If you put them in alphabetical order, then maybe it's less like.
We, we are prioritizing.
Well, you know, we should probably talk some about neighborhood though. I'm not suggesting one or the other, but we do have some very large neighborhoods in Stafford County now. I mean, it used to be, it was just Acquaharder back in the day, but now we've got other large communities. And do we still want to have that as, you know, a goal? Because we, we really, I, I think, going around the bend trying to accommodate it, I'm not suggesting we not do it, but I think it merits a discussion.
I think where it depends, like, I personally don't like to split neighborhoods in general. I am more likely to split for non-high school. Because in my experience, when you split a neighborhood and they're going to two different high schools, you get some kind of mischief that occurs within the neighborhoods, particularly around school competitions.
But people who want to call Leland Station a neighborhood, right? You've got, you've got, part of Leland Station is on one side of Leland Road, and another part's on a different side of Crimmer House Road. And they do not all go to the same elementary school, and it's okay. And, and to claim that they're all in the same neighborhood when you'd have to cross a major road to.
Get to the other section.
To get to the other section, so. Again, I think there's some factors that stay on there. I think if a neighborhood is also so big and have so many students, it's not, it's not really practical to try to put them in the same school.
I wonder if we're going to get to a point where some of our neighborhoods have too many students for a school.
Right.
I don't know, depending on how many kids we have, yeah.
Like over a thousand?
We could, not Acquaharder because I know they're not, they used to be the biggest.
Yeah, Acquaharder should not be in this conversation, we're not going to talk about it.
There was like 2,000.
Students, elementary students?
No, no, um, homes, 1,800, 1,900.
Yeah. No, it's like 25,000.
All right, so I've given you my feedback, I think we should just leave it and.
So as far as.
And maybe alphabetize, just so that it takes that thing that we said, this is the one.
Or don't even put letters next to them.
Right.
We should put that.
Yeah. They're just simple points.
As far as the new regulation, I mean, we can certainly review this and come back.
And specifically say these are presented in alphabetical order.
Right.
Save that, because people don't say, oh, you put this first.
Right.
Even though you said they're not in priority order.
It's new.
It's a new, this is a new regulation. As you know, regulations are developed to outline process, and so you did ask that we put something together and go back to you with this, and so, just wanted to see if this kind of meets your expectation around regulation.
Okay. So having these discussions.
And with aesthetics, it's going to be first.
Aesthetics will be first. Let's have a conversation about what factors we'd like to see presented in round one of scenarios for elementary 18 and 19. I think with high school, it was the, kind of the biggest topics that kept coming up were the demographic data of the schools, which I know is different in an elementary than at a high school because they're smaller, but.
And utilization, I think that was trying to maximize the utilization of the school that was more out of the other factors.
Yes, and, you know, I guess, location and transportation. Because I think, obviously Cardinal Forest was like the poster child of the neighborhood that was, or Stafford Lakes, that was bussed to the school that was not closest, and they became kind of the poster child for things we're trying to correct. And I think we have several smaller instances in elementary that we might want to look at correcting. So I think for me, that would be kind of top priority is realigning families back to probably where they should have been five years ago, or whenever they got moved.
I, I worry about really high needs kids who are in a school where the school has really worked to work with those families and then develop relationships, and then we're moving them to another school, that can be really hard, so.
And may not be equipped with personnel to handle.
Correct.
At that, for that year, it might have to be another year before they are.
Right, so that's something that I, I, but not that, you know, on the other hand, it may be in terms of, we don't want a school to have to be overcrowded because of that, or to create islands because of that, but just that it is something that is considered. It's more about resource stability. Right. I mean, like if you have a school that's accustomed to dealing with a lot of ELL students, and now we're changing it, and the ELL students are all being moved to a school where there had been no ELL students, that can be a real challenge. Not that we shouldn't do it, but, but to give, give it some thought as we go through.
And that was kind of Stan Hadwigs.
Wouldn't we move staff as well to accommodate?
Sometimes it happens, sometimes it doesn't.
Right.
Like very often.
That's by choice, isn't that seniority, staff get to pick?
Well, not for ELL, if the school no longer has the population to support ELL, it's not like we're going to keep.
Well, just generally, no, it's not, that's just an example. It could be something else. We've always had that, because certain, I'm looking down here, you know, Mr. Mackey. You know, he knows his family, like he said, I can tell you everybody who's a car ride. These principals know their families, so maybe what we need is a special plan for the transition between the staff, the principal and the staff. Because the kids that get moved, when you're in a school, those teachers get together and they decide who's going to be assigned to what class for the next grade line in the elementary. And they know the students and they know the teachers, but if your child gets redistricted, they don't know if your child is in the new school.
We do, there is a transition plan though for redistricting.
Well, there is, but, but maybe in the case that Dr. Chase is talking about, you know, it needs to be more attuned.
Family engagement type stuff for a transition period.
Individual situations.
Well, is that in here too? Because you just brought up a good point. One of the things that, and I spoke with Dr. Smith about, what our principals did with the elementary redistricting, they did a fantastic job of not just your family engagement things before school that are traditional, they did other, above and beyond, extra so that new families could maybe get to know principals and some staff, maybe get to walk around the school just to further, you know, we always note that there's a little bit of a fear in a parent. And so it would take that down, because if you bring down the parent fear, you lessen the child's. But I just think that maybe as part of this, that we find a way to maybe articulate that that will be done, something will be done.
Yeah, and we, we've already talked about some, it's going to be a number of transition events. And we've got high school you've already done, right? We've got elementary that's coming on, so there's going to be a lot of that. And so, and you're going to have kids coming together from to three new schools. And so we've already talked about the volume of transition and how we do need to plan some of those transition activities. And once we have an idea what that's going to look like at elementary, we can get our principals around that.
I just didn't know that would be articulated in this, or not so much, or?
You mean in terms of, I mean, I don't think in terms of the prioritization around, on this or the policy.
Around a reg, in a regulation? Not a policy, but a regulation?
I'm happy to take a look at it, I don't know what I thought, yeah.
Okay. Just that.
Are you thinking like a regulation?
Something that will.
Something that triggers that response from the schools, right?
Yes. Will, that, it's something that will happen, I'm not saying it has to, but.
We don't get into the details, Ms. Randall, but the last bullet in the regulation actually says, the superintendent's school leadership and administration will facilitate the transition of students to their new schools. I think that's, the purpose of that was to like incorporate those sort of.
Okay.
Community events and the transition to the new school.
Okay.
Also doesn't limit them or put them in a box, you've got to do it this way, you know?
No, no, I wouldn't want that, but I just, you know.
But still, there needs to be something.
Because some of the schools did it, like Hampton Oaks painted a mural that included Moncure's bear in with their mascot as well to show that they were joining together. But I just think that, you know, every school didn't do that, and that's fine.
And he has enough principals visiting every single student from, like, he went to every single student's house.
Gosh, that's nice. But just, like I said, just, I, I don't say define it, but I was just saying, you know, some, but I think that's, this.
And we have talked about, I think Dr. went in, like already talked about making sure there is some uniformity. Since we're, this isn't a countywide redistricting, we're going to have some kids shifted around.
Yeah, this is going to be the elementary district we've ever had.
Right, in every school, it'll be a different one.
Do we anticipate there are any elementary schools that will be non-impacted by any of these?
I can't imagine.
No, I think everybody's going to be impacted. And, and the new schools, I'm not as concerned about the transition for the new schools because that's, that's a lot to happen. They're, they're all new, it's the ones that may be getting a few, or, you know, more, and, and, you know, how that, how that works.
Right, or they're not losing. Like I think some of our, like corner schools, the outlier schools, well, much like North, didn't, like we didn't add to them, we took, we removed, but on the elementary side, it's going to be, I think, the opposite. There are going to be some schools that may not lose any families, and we will just be adding.
Right.
I'm very careful to have this conversation, even with some schools in my district. Like, in high school, I feel like everybody is going to have some reduced capacity, but in our elementaries, it's not going to be the case. Some of our elementary schools are going to be more crowded post-redistricting because of our utilization.
And I wouldn't even say crowded, they will, they'll just have a full school. Whereas, like I said, you know, for me, I, I've said this early on, is I would love to see the outlying schools, Ferry Farm, Rock Hill, Garrisonville, get a full school because Ferry Farm has been involved in four redistrictings as a way of helping out another school. And so we get a piecemeal brought in of communities as opposed to, you know, a nice redistricting of kids that just are chosen for Ferry Farm. So I just think that, you know, that, you're right, it's going to fill those schools as they should be.
Right.
Because everything has been very complex.
But if you're not used to it, it feels, you know, it's, it's certainly something to get used to. And that, like, that is my biggest, like, my priority is I want to see the schools utilized. I would love to accommodate for future growth, if we know, if we know that the ground has been broken, you know, those townhouses right across the street, let's leave a couple spaces in the school that we know that they're going to go to, because we know that those are right there. Maybe not the 10-year growth plan, but at least the, the active developments to know so that we're not putting all of our schools to the same percentage, like they're not all going to be at 90% and then some of them will stay, and some of them will end up at like 120.
Right, but I would say, I mean, and some of this is a staff question too, but as Ms. Randall was noting with North, North, a full North is very different from a full Stafford.
Hartwood.
Hartwood. But, but I was going to say, Hartwood, a full Hartwood is going to be a very different experience than a full Conway.
Well, we've asked that, not to the 100.
You know, just in terms of, and I know we have a util, you know, I know we have this utilization thing and all of that, but what I hear from principals at the older schools is like there are no closets for them to put any storage.
There's no place for storage, yeah.
You know, and that would be the question, I think, is, when we look at all of our schools, what's the optimal utilization of a Hartwood and a Ferry Farm? And so that we can try to target, so we're leaving space for addition, for new students in areas where we have growth, but we're not stuffing students into a school that's maybe not going to accommodate all the things they need to.
And that'll come with the EAP, when you have the classroom stuff in that.
Yes.
And then the other issue I've been thinking about is, I would like to see us try to kind of maintain our Title I proportions. Like I don't want to end up with a redistricting that, for some reason, instead of having the six or eight we have, we end up with like three, but they're at like 80% for the reduced lunch, right? Or that we go down to maybe, we've spread out populations that lose the support.
The status quo of one might be.
That's true. But.
Right, it might be moved. It might be, yeah.
And then, or to purposefully spread out populations so that we have no Title I schools and therefore lose any available support that might exist at the time. So I understand that this might mean that a school that is Title I today, based on how populations shift, that particular school may not be, but for those families that have come to rely on the resources that are needed to support them, I don't want, I want to make sure that kind of.
You know, and to your point, we have elementary schools that have much stronger PTOs because the families are, they have more resources. And we have schools that struggle because they have a higher portion of free redistricting.
Well, Hampton Oaks is a good example. Hampton Oaks was title, clearly Title I before the last redistricting.
And then, and then it switched over to Moncure.
So, but yet Hampton Oaks stayed on for the rollback, rollback period, which.
CSR.
Yeah, I had my.
Well, and that's what happened.
And I don't want to.
And Hartwood will lose those benefits.
And Hartwood did too.
Yeah, and, and that's, I think we're going to have to look very carefully at that.
And the opposite power for Ferry Farm, where we were, and then we got a redistricted population that made us Title I, but we didn't get supports for a year. And that was extremely difficult, extremely difficult.
Yeah, and that's what I'm worried about too. You know, we, we, like the CSR classes, or CRS classes, if we have classroom reduction sized classes, but we redistrict, and now suddenly we have a school that doesn't need classroom reduction, but we have a school that does, and it doesn't have access to it.
Maybe we ought to build that into our scenario.
Yeah.
Once we, once we approve the redistricting.
So, so when we're doing this, we have to consider it.
Assignments, then we look at identifying the Title I schools for the, the year. And we, we've got another year to, to.
Can we do that? Can we do that? Like, if we redistrict and we designate at that, at the time of redistricting, does that help us get the resources in place for when the schools actually open? Or do the schools have to be open for them to even start qualifying?
No, we, it's, it's up to us to identify those schools, right? And it's, it's our choice. We could have two, we could have ten.
Yeah, we have the percentage. We, we identify, and we still get the same amount of pie. Our pie in terms of Title I funding is not going to change, just how we split it up.
Right, but CSR is different, cause that's a state program, right? And it, is it still does the three, three-year rolling average?
But we don't have to accept it.
Right.
If we, we have a choice. Cause I was always asking, how much does it cost us? Cause we had schools that were clearly not Title I anymore, but yet they had smaller classes because we could get more money, but it did cost us money to get the money. It wasn't free.
And CSR has a minimal impact on us now because of our staffing caps right now, that we are class size caps that we have on K through three.
Okay.
Already kinda mirrored the CSR with the exception of, I think K Waller Barrett, because of their higher percentage, has a, a lower cap on CSR.
Moncure did too. I don't know if it's still does.
Um, yeah, so it was really like one grade level that K Waller Barrett that was impacted by it, uh, these past few years.
That's really the kind of stuff I worry about, mostly, you know, for the kids that are there. The kids that are neat, that have flourished or benefited under that educational structure. And technically, they should still have it, but because of bureaucracy, they don't. And I'm, you know, for the time it takes to requalify or recalibrate, you know, I wanna make sure that the kids that need it and the teachers that need it get the resources they need to continue to support those kids.
We'll have to decide, once we know what the percentages are, then we as a school board say where do we draw the line? Because it's, it's our choice. We could have ten schools in Title I, or we could have three schools in Title I. Or, you know, it's, it's really, in, in the past, what we've done is look at where, where is there a gap, you know, in the percentages? And if the gap is like one or two percent, we would err on the side of keeping them in as title versus keeping them out. But it's whatever the board wants to do, but it should be part of this process. Once we finish with the, with the decision on who's gonna be where, and then you get a chance to run all that data, and then come back to us and, you know, what are we gonna, what are we gonna put there?
Okay, so this will be an ongoing conversation.
Yeah, if I could point out one good thing, just in terms of the timeline, if you can, so staff's gonna come back to you in March, on March eleventh, with, uh, there's gonna be another work session, and we're talking about these initial uh, scenarios that, uh, the school board will review. The plan is to bring you multiple scenarios and you can let me know which ones you want me to take.
My, my head is splitting, thinking about, what, seventeen schools times multiple scenarios?
It's nineteen schools.
Nineteen, nineteen, oh my, well, that's right. I haven't, I haven't progressed till a year, I'm still in the present. So, so nineteen schools with multiple scenario, how many scenarios are you talking about?
I mean, I was thinking, no, no, no.
Like, I would say three to five.
That's what I was saying.
You're changing three again.
Three. But, but these scenarios are gonna be, because it is more on the boundaries. It's not, it's not like we're, we're, we're moving way overcrowded high schools and trying to optimize.
Which almost makes it harder.
It's gonna be tough.
Because it's gonna be tough. Yeah, I mean, we're handling overcrowded elementary schools.
Because what you're gonna be doing to fill these schools, like to fill Ferry Farm, the reason Ferry Farm hasn't been full is because the kids that would be the natural feed, which would be going up the road, they wanna stay at Grafton, or they wanna stay at Conway or Bellwood.
Yeah, but I mean, literally, peo-, kids from Grafton, I mean, they were, because we didn't do, you know, move into Grafton, move from, move Grafton into Ferry Farm, we didn't do that. You just blocked this population and stuck them there. But the problem is, is that we have populations of students that literally drive by Ferry Road and go to Grafton. So, I mean, these are, not to say that that'll change, but I'm just saying that there's some considerations to fill that.
Right, with last redistricting, we left Ferry Farm a little lighter because of the construction that was going there.
But we only gained one classroom.
Right, I'm just saying.
Yeah.
No, because, because construction was going on.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And also there was a lot of people pushed back. But we'll see, we'll see. I mean, it's gonna, this is, I, I think this is gonna be tougher than high school.
Yep.
Which is why you need to start with three, cause remember who you work with? We gonna change stuff.
Okay.
So, add to it, so.
It's great, so it's great.
Up for the challenge.
Now, are we gonna look at, are we gonna come in here on March eleventh and see it for the first time?
Yes.
Because I'm, it's gonna be really hard for me to look at these and, and absorb it and have any
Oh, yeah.
discussion about it? Well, we won't see it in advance?
But we don't, we work, we work to get, I mean, we still have our community meetings.
Get it, we'll get it on Friday, okay?
I think, yeah, we'll have redistricting meetings and stuff. I think we'll mostly receive for information.
And we work it, alright, so we'll just be receiving it.
And ask questions about.
Yes, yes.
And then I think, you know, the theory.
And then we don't work until April eighth on it.
So, so I was asking, cause March eighteenth is a school board meeting on my calendar. And so I would like the redistricting community sessions to be when school board members can go.
Oh, for sure.
Yeah, we'll, yeah, we'll take that. Good catch, yeah.
Oh.
Yes, we'll change that and then the twenty second, April twenty second, I think is.
Is a meeting as well.
Okay, especially cause don't we have to have a town, we have the public hearings, so that's on the.
That is in there already, yeah. Okay.
So, if you don't, I just wanna ask Lionel to kind of, maybe Lionel can help us, just what you heard, and so we're all on the same page. I don't know if you wanna have consensus around this, so we, I just wanna make sure that we're all on the same page, what we're bringing back, what the priorities are, so that we're all on the same page, so.
I think, I mean, I'm not gonna ask him to parrot it back, but, you know, the fact that we've had the conversation, there will be minutes, there will be a document, he's heard it.
Well, I'd be happy to hear what he heard, what he.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I already asked Lionel, he said, I gotta go back and watch the tape.
There you go. Yeah.
Fair enough.
I was like, Lionel, you got this?
All takers said that we're, we're gonna put them in alphabetical order.
Well, we're talking, but we've talked about.
I, I, I'd like to know, cause I didn't understand that we had actually given Mr. White.
I understand that was for the policy, how he wanted to reorder the policy.
Other than all of it.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Yeah.
We have those changes. I feel confident, confident about those changes, but as far as if we have priorities, as far as Lionel presenting or preparing his first, uh, redistricting scenarios, I think there's maybe some, we probably need some more clarity on that, unless you think it was all stated.
For three.
I personally thought he did a great job with high school, and then we brought stuff in. I mean, you gotta start somewhere.
So what we've heard is demographic data, what we've heard is transportation and distance, particularly realigning the.
Optimization of the schools based on the condition.
Yeah, space optimization are probably the top three.
And demographics, so that we're not over, um, overextending one particular school.
Demographics and then the.
And special education, maybe we should be looking at that, so that if, so we're not, we're not, cause I think, and that goes under stability, trying to maintain stability, especially for specialized students.
And it also speaks to utilization too, how much space the school has for that.
Well, is special ed going to be on school they're geographically assigned to? Are we going?
And we can back to base.
No, I mean, it's something. They were supposed to be closer to their home school anyway. So I would like to think that we're not disrupting many of those students.
But it was just one particular section, subgroup of identified special ed students.
We are taking a deeper dive into, into back to base. I think one particular subgroup we're.
Are we gonna get a conversation about that?
We are, we are looking at initially, cause we think that's kind of the first step. It is gonna take some additional time for us to look at other programs and whether that's, that's best for those kids, so.
And it's not, you know, a super large portion of our.
And there's placements, a lot of times are APT decisions too, so in terms of, if we look at that, in terms of the programs.
But I think part of that might help, I mean, I, I sometimes don't know if it's cart or horse, because I feel like how we redistrict might impact particularly where, if we're going to reverse back to base, so centralize some of these programs, where and how we do that might depend on redistricting. Or do we have like Mr. Mackey or Mr. Wilcox come in and say, if we're going to centralize these programs, they should be at these two, three schools, and therefore we have to redistrict, leaving space for them. So I'd be curious what the.
Horse cart situation is.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I would refer us to look at the kids and look at the needs, and then where we have the space and the specialized teachers and where it makes sense. So I appreciate the concept of back to base, we're not moving this so far out of your neighborhood school, but we also can't have that, some of those programs in every single school, and to have the specialized instruction and support, so.
Right.
So as we look at that to see where's the best placement for those programs.
And, and can we please define capacity utilization? Cause I think that would help people looking at this. Because I, I've heard a couple of times, and I get it, that North isn't the same as the other high schools, cause it's older. But hypothetically, if we have a hundred percent capacity, it should be okay anywhere. So maybe our capacity needs to be lower in North in terms of the formula than the others, but if we say, you know, I, I just, I, it,
We, I think that's kind of what we do.
It baffles me to hear a hu-, a capacity, a hundred percent capacity in North is not the same as a hundred percent capacity at Stafford High School. Cause it should be. If it's a hundred percent, it's a hundred percent. And it may be because the, the hallways are smaller, maybe the capacity should be fewer skis per classroom or whatever. But it's, you know, it just doesn't make sense.
But you just answered it right there though. But it's just like if I have five people in my car, it's different than five people in my old minivan.
Right, but maybe your minivan has a different. But, but your car and your minivan should have a different capacity.
Right.
You know, what fits. Is that, that's what I, I just think that would be helpful, because we hear this a lot about it's not the same, but it's, it a hundred percent should be the same, wherever you want.
But it's, it's not the same for like Hartwood and for.
Well, I think it's because we have program capacity at the elementary level, but not at the high school and middle school levels.
It, it should be if your, if your capacity is, is.
Yes, and that's true.
Like, is a full Drew really a full Drew? As being an older school that has some of the same concerns that North does? Not really. I mean, a full Drew is not.
But that, but full should be less.
Full for that school, but it shouldn't be that.
Full should be less for that school. Hartwood, we, we already have a, a firm height, you know, high number, and that's from the, uh, the sewer capacity.
But if we went on what the original construction was, like back in, like right now, we're talking about.
Oh, we're, we're, we're so far beyond that.
Right, but I'm just saying, like, right now, we're building a school, if the school's supposed to be two thousand, but twenty years from now, if we have re-amendation in how education is delivered, maybe it's gonna, maybe the number of two thousand that was set in twenty twenty-four is not a realistic number, like inflation, right? Like, we might be able to have more kids in a room because of how education is delivered thirty years from now. Maybe it's less because of how education is delivered.
But we've, we've done that.
But the two thousand number, just because they set it in twenty twenty-four, doesn't maintain, doesn't really reflect how a school can be used at all the time.
Right, which is why it should fluctuate, and if we define capacity utilization, then, you know, that could change. I just think it would, if, if we're gonna say it's the basis for, you know, action that we're gonna take, then we should, we should have a definition for it. I'm sure you've got one somewhere.
Probably. We'll get it figured out.
You can make that up.
Thank you.
We'll make it happen.
What happened?
Okay.
Alright, our favorite topic, budget.
I guess we're done.
As it does. Now, I'll get your budget.
Okay. Okay. Don't use that one. Oh.
It's a updated version of what you guys have.
New one, so get rid of this one?
Yep.
This comes right here. Just had that last slide.
Thank you, Steph.
Thank you.
And keep our budget changes well. Cause see all of them.
Give me your three ways on, so you don't.
Yeah, I think so. Can we add that one?
Does everyone still need everything on it? No, you still need those back papers, just give me the staple packet. I crossed it over.
Really, it's just a date change, and there's an extra slide on the back that we added for this work session, so you may have to keep the old ones, not the, the wrong data in there.
It's upside down.
Time to lock the door.
They taped a different picture than yours.
We don't invite us and they just come.
Alright. Mr. Palmer and Ms. Bitch?
Yep. Um, alright, so, uh, one of the reasons you just got a new, uh, printed copy is because we, when we consolidated the two meetings into one, we did add a, a slide or two at the end on compensation, because we knew we were gonna expand on that on the eighteenth meeting, and that slide deck was from the February eleventh meeting that you had in front of you, so we just wanted to give you that updated copy. Uh, wanted to just talk about our projected revenue, uh, but, um, the governor's budget, um, ultimately had four point seven billion dollars in additional spending. K twelve education only sold two hundred and eighty-six million dollars of that, so not great. And so what we were, what we were seeing in Stafford was a ten point five million dollar increase based on the governor's budget for the state. That with a, a five million dollar increase in our local transfer, that was based on the county administrator's five-year budget from last fall. Uh, and then some other local funds, um, some Impact Aid, federal, federal dollars, ultimately netted out about two hundred thousand dollars. So we're sitting at a fifteen point seven million dollar increase. Now, state general assembly is still finalizing their budget. Uh, we should have more information on that, hopefully, uh, pretty, pretty soon. It's developing. I will say the House and the Senate both, um, and I shared this with you a few weeks ago, House and the Senate both had additional revenue for the schools, um, roughly in that seven to eight million dollar range. Uh, and then additionally, they, the only difference actually between, they both had some relief, uh, to the support cap, uh, full lift of the support cap that we've been dealing with since two thousand and ten-ish, uh, and then.
It's the Great Recession.
Yes, and then, um, some special education add-on money, so additional money for our special education students that we already have. And what they, where they both differed a little bit was, I don't know, and I forget which one is which, so I apologize, but one of the, um, either the House or the Senate had a thousand dollar equivalent bonus for SOQ positions only, um, in FY twenty-five. One of them had it in FY twenty-six. Both of them gave us a flexibility that if you didn't have the local match to piece of that, or, or like every school division, we exceed the SOQs in a lot of areas, so we have more positions than what are actually funded by the state. So, um, that, the money they were giving us for that thousand dollar bonus did not cover every single position that we had. And we have to pay FICA taxes and, and stuff on it. So ultimately, um, we can reduce what that thousand dollar is so that we, um, can afford to pay it all without an additional local match. That would equate to about seven hundred fifty dollars. It's not an exact amount, we'll get to that, um, if that comes to fruition in the budget. Though what we're kinda hearing is that it's probably gonna lean towards the FY twenty-six budget instead of the FY twenty-five, cause I know a lot of school divisions will have appropriation issues if, if they give us that money in FY twenty-five versus FY twenty-six. Um, so, uh, that's high level on the budget. We expect some changes, uh, to that fifteen point seven million dollar projected increase.
So what about, um, I, I just, I mean, are members of the general assembly at all concerned about needing more money for the unemployment stuff? Like, is there going to be, um, you know, people needing unemployment benefits, and so that's gonna pull money from the state? So are they thinking at all about needing to hold on for some of that?
Um, I have not, I've not heard about that. I don't know if it's something that Lisa has heard specifically about it.
I was just curious, yep.
Um, the House and the Senate budgets both passed, and so now it's.
So we're in reconciliation.
They're in reconciliation.
Correct, yep.
Okay, yeah, cool.
And they're almost identical.
Yeah.
So does that mean we're going most likely to receive an additional seven to eight million dollars?
From, from what this budget was based on? Okay, that's good to know.
And state revenue. And, and we'll get to it. We had a fourteen million dollar gap, so it doesn't quite close the gap.
But, and also, wouldn't some of that have to be for those bonuses? So it's not, no, not included.
No.
Those are gonna be in FY twenty-six, possibly.
Yeah, cause I treat that differently because it's not recurring money, so it's one-time money they would provide us for the bonuses, it's not recurring over.
It's also earmarked money that we can just use for operations, so.
And the other thing.
Right, cause it's one-time, just here's a little gift, because we don't really value enough to give you actual sale, right?
Yeah. And, and full disclosure.
Sorry.
You're, it's true.
Yeah, the four point seven billion dollars in additional spending, some of that was one-time funding, so they're, they are taking that and then reallocating it to the schools. So we thank them for that, but you're correct, it's not going into additional salaries, so it's still just the, really, the, the second year of the three percent, so we're allocated from the state, which we have to do that minimum of one point five.
But this seven to eight million is monies that we had not anticipated or counted when their budget was put together.
And it's not in this number here. Correct.
So regardless, and that is money that we could use for, to meet needs?
Yes, ma'am.
Any of the needs, okay. So that's good to know.
But we still have a, we still have a huge gap, I mean, you know, with that, so.
No, but it's half the gap.
Right, yes.
Half the gap, the gap is just been cut now.
Notice from Patrick about maybe the ELL stuff is not gonna be quite as, do we know yet?
We, we don't and we won't, and I wouldn't, and as I recommended, the Friday bulletin, I wouldn't get ahead of that, because the, if the information we got does not agree with all other.
Budget language and.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, the only, I mean, it's frustrating that, like, we can't count on anything until we get it, and.
But we have to make decisions before that.
And we can't plan on using, and we can't plan anything because the rules keep changing.
And I, like, even on the local side, they prefer to wait and see what Richmond does before they decide, but it's not like, it's not like we have, we ever have like extra money. The money would go to something else, or it would go back to them to decide to reallocate to us anyway, should there be a surplus.
So what's the gap now? Between what?
Fifteen point.
Well, we're still like fourteen point two, and we're waiting on that budget to be finalized from the state.
Yeah, nothing is.
So we're not a hundred percent counting.
Well, we don't even know we're gonna get the five from the county. That was in the county administrator's five-year proposal, which was done years ago, and who knows?
No, it's in last fall.
From October.
Just saying, yeah, but what is? Yeah, but what is, what, has has these, he presented that to the supervisors?
In the fall.
Oh, but is this yours recently?
In his five-year plan, he presented that in October, and in the five-year plan, in year one of the five-year plan, we were getting an additional five million, but it's not until early March.
That's his plan though, that's not the supervisor's, so we don't know.
That he presents the actual budget for this year.
Correct. I'm not, I'm not sure we can count on that five at this point.
Well, we can't really count it on anything, but we have to work with something and.
I I I.
It's like we can't count on the funding formula, right?
Well, then we can count over seven to eight if if that's in.
Yeah, it was actually a little over eight million, so.
It's both this senate and the house.
Oh, but it's over.
Are you saying?
So about eight, I would count on eight million.
It's over eight million, okay.
Are you saying to take the five million out of the, out of the budget then?
No, I'm just saying that you, it it's not a given.
It's arbitrary. It's it's an, it's a number that is known, but I'll do, it's it's right now, it's 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 not a little by.
It's arbitrary right now, yeah.
But that, it's not just based on the past five-year plan, it's part of a conversation you had with the county administrator, Dr. Smith?
But it's not that easier, isn't it?
They were aware that we were presenting and that's what we were, what we were starting at.
It's their. That's his working number for their su, for their budget?
I don't know exactly what his number's gonna be. I know he's been working through changes and some of that stuff.
What'd he make in his presentation?
March fourth, I believe.
March fourth, wow. Should we be there?
Yes, we should.
March fourth, it's your orders, March fourth.
Start that.
And what color shall we wear?
Green.
Green.
Oh, okay, oh, there you go. Um, I think green brings. I mean, I look at this budget, it's a relative, it's a pretty conservative budget. I I I don't, I I I don't wanna ask for more, but I don't, I don't wanna ask for less either. And then I think we need to see where the county comes in, cause we still need about another fourteen million from them.
Fourteen point two million dollar gap. Give, we'll get the initial state money, we'll get down to about six million dollars.
I think so, so that. Includes, so that's nineteen point two.
Yes.
So we need another nineteen point two million.
So if we don't ask, we're never gonna get, and if we don't ask, the public doesn't know.
Right. And this isn't enough.
And so.
I mean, even asking for nineteen point two million dollars is not enough, because it doesn't fund the teachers' salaries.
I I understand the school side allocation.
And it doesn't.
It doesn't, it's.
Anyone should ask for more.
And now, we're looking at thirteen percent in Prince William over two years that we can't even begin to compete with, and Spotsylvania started to catch up with us, cause they're getting their act together.
Which is why we at least ask for more.
At the start of the scale, not like that.
I understand we're probably not gonna get it, but we can't.
But I don't know how we can, because also the current economics of your situation is unstable.
But that's part of the reason why we have to, like, we talk about, you know, joking, not joking, that we might lose federal money. Why do we do that?
Yeah, I mean, even if we just lose ten percent, we lose.
I mean, it's two percent, but we don't have two percent.
Two percent.
A hundred percent. We can't fix that.
Like, our budget is not in a place where making up two percent is an easy thing to do. We don't have anywhere to pull it from.
I just don't think it's responsible to not ask for what we actually need. I think that that's disingenuous and it's not, it's just not.
And we've been.
If I'm an educator and I'm working here and you're, and we don't say, well, we don't express our needs, and then six months later, we're all looking at each other, oh my god, we need all this and we need all that. I'm gonna wanna be the educator to come here and curse you guys out for not saying what we needed, cause you never know, right? Probably not gonna get it, but how dare you not ask, cause I I know they need it.
Yeah, salaries and the school side allocation are the two that make me lose sleep. We've been trying to do that school side allocation.
The phase, to fall back on the phase, the the phase adjustments for the teachers.
Yes.
And we're already behind in the phase adjustments for the service sector, and we've made, we've made promises to all of our employees, so yeah. Those two things are the two things that are the most important to me.
And every supervisor has said that they want more money to go to the classroom, and the number one way to get money to the classroom is to pay our teachers.
Right.
And they do not make that easy for us to do.
But if we were to make the teacher's salaries, then instead of asking for nineteen point two from county.
We have to ask for like thirty-five.
We've gotta ask for more like, we've gotta ask for another eight.
Is it seven million more?
Twenty-seven.
Was it seven million more to do the whole phase?
Four. I think it's eight.
So.
Eight?
Yeah, I'm gonna.
Eight points up.
Eight point seven.
So.
Eight point seven to fifty.
Yeah, so.
Full phase is seven million.
Yeah, that's the, that's different, but completing phase four is about seven million dollars.
Okay.
Each additional step, so sixteen to seventeen, seventeen to eighteen.
So it would be twenty-six million. Twenty-six point two is what we need to ask.
Over the current nineteen million is what you're asking.
Yeah, yes. So to, yeah, to get our full phase four is gonna be.
Full phase two for the service scale and and.
Yes, well, that's already in.
Yeah.
The nineteen point two.
That is already in, and I.
And the nineteen point two, but to get to the rest of phase four.
It's seven million dollars.
It's seven. A little bit more.
So do we ask for the seven million more?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
All right, who's for it?
I mean, we still, I mean, it's. We all, we sat down at a table together with the board of supervisors and they said, let's have a five-year plan, and we said, okay. And we came up with a five-year plan and we did three of them.
And 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 the five-year plan is pretty close.
Right.
Because when you go back and look at it, we needed about fourteen and a half, fifteen million to finish to phase four this year. That was in the five-year budget.
And they knew that.
And then, yeah.
I I do wanna point out, and this will kind of set us back a little bit, but I I wanna be fully transparent. One of the reasons we've been able to, one of the things that we're not able to do right now when we're doing this phase four is that's assuming that we're keeping that starting teacher pay.
I know.
Fifty thousand, five hundred and twenty-five.
Yes.
So another avenue to take to increasing that teacher pay, which increases the pay for all of our teachers, is actually work on getting the base of our teacher scale up higher, which makes us more competitive with Frenchburg and Spotsylvania. Cause it it impacts every teacher above there because of the way our scale goes.
Well, that's really, but that's all like more expensive right now, like, we have to think about how to do all of it, right?
Do we have that chart?
Like, eventually, once we've corrected all the phases, we can then work at shifting all of it.
We have to adjust the base.
Yeah.
Not to say that we should ignore it, but I don't wanna get back into a compression situation.
Yeah.
And if we can't even do our phases for the people who've been waiting for the phases, I'd hate to go back and double down on the ones that have gotten those phased increases and.
What does the teacher's scale look like if we just adjust the base and not the scale?
Yeah, I agree. So, and that's where, if we increase the base, um, for every five hundred dollars we increase the base, it's about a three million dollar increase in the overall teacher scale. So one of the examples I put up there was what if we wanted to pay fifty-two thousand, which is right at that number that Spotsylvania has, so it puts us back ahead of them? That's an eight point seven million dollar.
Versus seven.
But that's, that that's on top of or we 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 forfeit phase four.
It's an or or an and?
Yes, it's an or or an and. It's either fifteen.
Percentage wise, you're still seeing, pay your percentages for the teacher.
It's either fifteen point seven million or seven or eight point seven.
I struggle when we're fitting phase four, because we've got, we've done increases for everybody's up through phase three.
This is the. The base scale goes up five hundred, but then you go to three percent increase three steps.
And this is, and then what does that do to help us fit phase four next time? Cause if we're gonna.
It's not five hundred flat, no, no, no.
That's just. It's going to, but what does that do? Like, if we did, and this is, I'm not advocating for it, I'm asking a question. If we did this and skipped phase four, doesn't that make phase four more expensive to correct in future years, when we still have to make up our starting salary as well?
Next year. Cause it's also increases the base.
Cause one of the things we, where we do win, I guess, is that if you stay with us, you will end up making more. And for some teachers, they're not looking to division hop, they're not looking to chase the highest pace, you know, pay, they live here, they work here.
They live here, they work here.
Or they want a place where, you know, the progress is gonna get them where they wanna be. On top of us just being awesome all around.
It'll, it works both ways. So if you increase the base scale, the phase four is gonna cost more next year. If you increase phase four now, increasing the teacher, the base scale's gonna cost more in future years as well. The reason I brought it up is cause we brought a five-year plan for our teacher scale, it also included bringing up our base scale, you know, at least a few hundred dollars. We actually got off track of that from last year because we couldn't afford to come up with full two hundred fifty, five hundred dollars. So we're a little bit behind, and so that seven million dollars isn't incre, or seven million to complete phase four, isn't increasing that base teacher scale.
Because we dropped adjusting the base at the lower end of the scale last year.
In order to afford phase three.
In order to afford the phase three.
Correct.
This makes sense.
It's almost like every subsequent phase, like for the next five-year plan should be like correcting, but also increasing.
But I, I also, the other. By not. Yeah, by not correcting the base and our starting salary.
We're gonna fall further behind this year.
We're gonna fall further behind, and it's more likely that teachers are going to take the offer from the school with the highest starting salary, new teachers.
And move right out.
And move right up, and then we are gonna be stuck with teachers who maybe didn't get an offer until.
Well, and we've already been told that the teachers that we have now are not all coming at zero years.
Right.
They're coming with years, which makes them more expensive for us, but you know, again, they'll be as.
But we won't get them if phase four is not, you know.
But we'll get them with more experience, but now they're gonna cost us more.
Right, but there's a cost to training a brand-new teacher.
That someone else incurs and not.
Correct.
Only if we're competitive at a low scale.
And by increase, I just wanna repeat this, but increasing the base also has a significant positive impact on sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen steps, because.
Right.
It's that trickle-down and builds on on it. That's why it costs eight million dollars for only a five hundred dollar increase.
So if we increase the base, it affects the whole scale.
Yeah.
But it doesn't adjust it to our phase four. If we just do the phase four, we're really just doing that one targeted years between, what is, what are we up to, ten and fifteen or fifteen?
Twenty.
One.
When.
We're at sixteen.
Yeah, in the superintendent's budget, we went from fifteen to sixteen. Another thing we could do is kind of split the difference, and let's say, we wanna get to phase four to eighteen or nineteen, but let's increase the base of the scale, not all the way up to fifty-two thousand, but let's get it to fifty-one to five.
What was the, what was the five-year plan for the base of the scale? I mean, I think if we have a plan, then we should stick with it unless there's a reason to deviate. So what was the, what what did the five-year plan say for the base scale? Were we supposed to be increasing that, you know, a certain percentage every year?
Yes.
I mean, so that, how far off will we real?
I'll have to check, yeah, I don't know.
No, I'm just, I'm I'm trying to look at this in perspective.
So what what is your recommendation?
So, I mean, I, I mean, what what you're, what you are, you know, working through right now is a lot of the same things that I had to consider, along with the requirements around standards of quality and the staffing, trying to, looking at what's, uh, what do we, what do we really need to ask for? And so that's how I built my budget, um, that I presented to you based on the, those, that thinking behind it, that we wanted to support staff and do everything we can. We also have requirements in terms of SOQ positions that we have, so that's where I landed, um, but also knowing that you were gonna have a crack at it too, and to see what's gonna.
Yeah, to a certain extent, I kind of like the idea of increasing the base, because we're still increasing partial phase four through year sixteen, which most of our teachers were, are, that we're getting are in the twelve-year range anyway. So the teachers were already getting already covered by phase four, through phase four, but now we increased the base and we also did a crack at the starting teacher salaries. So that would be eight point seven million, so that would be.
Instead of seven million.
Instead of seven million, so there's more.
So there's.
Eight point two plus eight point seven.
Step sixteen. Plus five.
That's the person budget, that Dr. Chase's budget has us increased, just doing twenty percent of phase four.
So one, one of the five.
Right, right. So we would still get that to year sixteen, that's what I said, plus we would increase the base, which would benefit all of the scale.
Carter and Chris, does it, does it, if we, if if they did the the base scale, um, I know with the the phase instructional scale, the goal is to get three percent between each step, right? So that's what the goal, and that's what steps fifteen through twenty per phase four would do. If you did the the adjustment to the base, does that make the the percentages between each step closer to the three percent and doesn't even touch the gap?
It just keeps them at the same differentials we have built in right now.
So it doesn't make any cheaper.
What percentage is it now?
Um, so from zero to sixteen in this scale, it's three percent, and then it drops to roughly one point five percent between each step. And so the phases were to get that one point five up to three percent, so there was like a true three percent differential between each step.
So that would be, if we, if we did the step two and phase four through year sixteen, it's it's twenty-eight million, twenty-seven point nine million.
And what's the.
Can I ask a question?
Cause it's fourteen point two five and.
I just wanna ask a question, and I don't need this answer tonight, but when we did our five-year plan, we started at a certain presumption. And now, the, you know, we've been mandated by the state to, you know, add all these positions. Um, and and there's a cost to that, so in, I'd I'd like to know what is the cost of the mandated positions, you know, like the additional, um, ESOL teachers, the, um, you know, all the ones that we're saying it's not. Cause growth, I'm assuming we should have included growth positions in our calculations when we're coming up with our five-year plan. But these, these requirements from the, from, you know, the this legislature were not anticipated, so I think that, to me, you know, is 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 a different. So if I go in and ask for more money, it's not because I've changed my mind or I wanna do more, it's because we've had additional demands placed on us.
But those, but those, those SOQ positions that the state has added, that part of the money they're giving us is for their share of those SOQs.
Okay, well, but then we could, I, you know, I'd like to look at, does it balance? Is that seven to eight million or eight million now?
Right.
Is that equal to or greater than?
Yep.
You know, what what we're required to do, because I I, to me, that's that's important. That I'm not just.
Arbitrary with your.
Yeah, just, just wanting more.
Right.
Uh, and.
So really, your question is what is the local cost of those positions? Is that what you're asking or what's the?
No, I'm I'm asking what is the, what is, what is the cost, well, what is the cost to us as a school system?
So it would be local, yeah.
And and that would be, you know, after, you know, they do their their allocations. I'm looking at the growth in SOQ, I mean, surely the the ESOL is is, you know, the, just jumps out at me with thirty-six additional teachers. Quite a lot of money, um, that we hadn't counted on, but we also have thirty-one, um, paraprofessionals, level two. Is that a, was that a legislative change or how did that, we get to that amount being required?
I'm looking at Patrick, I mean, this.
As.
Yeah, that's growth, yeah. That's growth.
Growth thirty-one for growth? I mean, how many?
That's related to the growth trend that we have seen among our students identified for level-two services for special education based on our locally adopted staffing standards.
So are they, they're, are they SOQ?
No, those are locally adopted standards.
No. So that, that's our.
That's our standard.
Our choice.
Right.
Maybe.
And what.
In reality, it may not be, but it's not mandated.
Yeah, and what that does is we're not proposing to reduce class size, reduce caseloads, based on the growth that's coming in to keep that same level of class size, caseloads, same quality that we have now, given our growth.
Yeah, I'd like to get some more information on that. What is the proposed growth? Cause thirty-one is, that's a lot of new positions to to add. And I'm not saying we don't need them, because I don't have the information, but again, it's it's a substantial, um, cost. And another one, I I know Dr. Chase's question always was, when we have, when we had a grant, what are we gonna do when it's over? And we thought a half, was it a half million dollars for for grant positions that were just rolling over to, um, operating? Uh, see that somewhere? Where is it? I thought it was somewhere in here.
It's at the beginning.
At the beginning?
Basically, slide two or three, just.
That was, all right, let's see. I thought it was a half million. Here it is, five hundred and thirty, five hundred fifty-three thousand, but growth, grant positions moving to operating, so that's a choice. Not saying we, I mean, when we, when we funded these, Dr. Chase always asked that question, what are we gonna do when the money's gone? I don't know, remember what the answer was. What was it, Dr. Chase?
We borrow from Peter to pay Paul.
Yeah, well.
So wait, I'm sorry, I'm just maybe slow. The grant positions, so we're not gonna have these humans?
No, we are.
No, we are.
We're paying, we're paying a half million.
First of all, they cost us.
Okay.
We're paying for one of our locally funding.
Okay, all right, I got it.
Versus, you know, the grants, but it's 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 something to keep in mind when when we're doing it. I mean, there's half a million here, half a million there, you know, they they're they're adding up.
There are like grant positions that were doing world operating, when the grant, like, that there didn't get added.
I guess I'm just trying to understand what your point is, because if if, I I get what you're saying, right? You shouldn't, you have to do something with it, but then do you not take the grant and you don't create the position or? Well, so the question is, so the question is this, like, you can, somebody can say to you, hey, you know, um, I'm gonna give you, uh, I'm gonna give you a gift, gift certificate so that you can go get your hair done. Okay, that's good. Right? Here you go, right? And then next year, I'm not around anymore, and so you say, oh, well, we just need to take, we just need to find that for my budget, but I didn't used to have it, so.
It was a gift.
It was a gift.
One time.
Do I keep the gift going and so?
I know, no, I get that, I'm just saying, when you look at needing these humans and you get a grant for it, you know, I mean, how do you not take it?
In the past, the, in the past, because of growth, we've been able to, like, have positions that were previously locally funded or now grant funded, and that allows us to use the money for other priorities, and then we make them up. Like, I, I love to use the example of the gifted resource teacher that the prior board approved. Um, we used to not have one every, at every school building. The state was gonna fund us, like, all but two, and two became locally funded. And then a couple of years later, growth was so much that those two are no longer locally funded, they are state-funded because of our capacity. So I feel like for some of this, it's, we're gonna use the grant, and then by the time the grant expires.
Our growth is cut out.
Our growth cut out for you.
I mean, hypothetically, if it's a grant position, it should be discretionary, because we, we didn't have it. Unless we took a standard position and covered that with a grant. But I'm, I'm not, I'm not suggesting we not do it, but I think we need to be looking at this, because, you know, it's, it's, it's a lot of money here that, you know.
And I'd be curious if it's somebody who used to be locally funded that is now gonna be funded by a grant, and therefore it's potentially freeing up funds that we could use for something else.
Yeah, so it goes the other way.
And then in three years, when the grant is over, that person is, reverts back to being locally funded. Almost treat, using their displaced salary expense as almost like one-time funds, right? Like, oh, well, fifty, we have fifty thousand dollars now this year, because half of this position is grant-funded. What temporary things can we invest in fifty thousand dollars in rather than other salaries?
Well, I was gonna say, you're exactly right in this thing, but now there are a number of grants, like, for example, uh, federal Title I funds. You can't do that. There's a supplement, and that's a plant provision that makes it so that you can't use the funds in that manner. Um, but there are other instances where the accessibility of grant money does enable you to move positions that may have been locally funded into the grant for dedicated funds to free up your ability to be able to operate. You know, and there are certainly cases where some of these positions, uh, over time may have started as locally funded, moved to grant for fiscal flexibility, and now we're having to plan ahead. So, um, that's regular budget management to see those pieces move.
It'd be helpful to know, you know, when we're looking at this, how many current grant-funded positions we have, and how many of those, um, were moved over from operating? Because maybe it'll, maybe it'll bounce out, I, I don't know.
A hundred and twenty-four out of like five thousand employees are grant-funded, is that what I just heard?
But how many of those were, were locally funded before we moved them up to grant?
Yeah.
And that, I think that's what you're saying, we do.
Yeah, it won't be clean, because there's a great deal of positions, particularly early childhood centers, that are partially funded by grants, and, uh, and I'd say having recent. And the percentage may change, I'm not trying to ever complicate this, but they may, may move from sixty-three percent grant to sixty-nine percent grant in the middle of the year. So, not to overcomplicate, that is.
And we have special education with Title VI B, that's funded with grant funds.
Roughly sixty FTE, but you can only partially fund them. So we told them we're half an FTE operating, half grant.
For everybody at home who wants to know how we get these half positions, this is how we get to fractions of positions.
You wonder what point three for social workers.
And I will share that we, you know, I looked at each of these positions, and we, as Carter mentioned, we have several grant-funded positions that are not going, moving in. You know, I've met with Patrick and looked at each one of these to say, alright, are these essential? Do we really need them? What would, what would stop to, to take place if we didn't continue these positions? And some of these, I mean, when we look at our, uh, some of our, one of our, uh, HR position around supporting new teachers, our Mentor Three-Sixty program, I'm here and time and time again, how great that is and how that, how that helps our new teachers coming in. One of these positions supports that, supports our new teachers when they come in, providing some of that support. So there's so many things that, that I didn't feel like we could live without, without putting these in, so that's why I recommended these to go in and not some of the others.
I'm, I'm asking questions.
I'm saying, we're happy to talk through any of those if you're.
I can make an informed decision if I have answered. The benefits at twenty-eight percent, is that lower than we used to calculate? I thought we calculated that higher in years past.
It always fluctuates a little bit depending on what our VRS rate percentage is, but the last few years, it's been right at twenty-eight percent.
That doesn't include like the health benefits part, so like the actual.
We add that on afterwards, that's like another eight to nine grand, just in health benefits for each employee.
So, so that's not in here?
No, it's in the, the.
In our health line of four million, it's actually baked into that line, it's not into this individual line here.
So, hmm.
I, I, I don't know if I can.
So the twenty-eight percent doesn't include the health benefits?
Yeah.
No. Okay, that's what I'm implying.
Cause we do a flat dollar amount on top of for health, it's not a percentage base.
And is it for every employee that participates in health, or is it for every employee?
We take an average, so we apply it to every FTE we add is about eighty-five hundred-ish. Um, but some cost more than that, some cost less, but what we see on average of our FTEs, that's what it costs. So whether they take it or not, that's an average amount.
So the ones that are taking it are subsidizing the ones that aren't? I mean, in terms of the cost.
Our local dollars are, not the, not our current employees, no, they're not subsidizing.
But isn't that a benefit? I mean, the health insurance is a benefit.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, these are, when we show the twenty-eight percent, that's a benefit that's based on a percentage of their salary, where.
So it's like the retirement and the.
Retirement, FICA.
And social security, our shares, that one percent.
So what happens if we suddenly give an influx of people, add it to our health insurance policy, because there's a change in the federal workforce?
Well, we're already seeing significant increases in our health insurance costs, and we could see additional, if we see add-ons to our employees, like dependents that are added on.
Right, change in circumstances allows people to change their health insurance.
No, I know, I'm just saying that I, I think we may be seeing some of those.
No, you're right, you're right, I'm agreeing.
I'm agreeing. I, I had asked, so the, the slight difference, but the, the health insurance increases aren't keeping the percentages quite the same as what they were last year. So, I mean, I.
So we didn't wanna do a flat percentage for them, because some of them cost more than others. So our, when we looked at where we compared to some other localities and the local government, our employee-only plan was our cheapest, and just doing five percent of that was not a, a dollar, a significant dollar.
I see, it's like a seven percent change.
So we did a seven and a half percent, and then for our higher amounts, we did the five percent. So like our family plan, you'll see a five percent increase, but it was seven and a half percent on our lower.
Um, and so are we, uh, self-insuring for dental also, or is that different?
No, so dental is pretty much a hundred percent funded by the employee, we don't really subsidize that at all.
Okay.
Now, that, just folded, that can go, we're talking like tens of maybe a hundred thousand tops, and it can fluctuate, but it's designed to be no subsidization subsidized by the.
Cause, cause just going from thirty to thirty-one, like, with inflation, that just seems really low to me, that we can do that by only increasing that one dollar from this year to last year.
And dental just doesn't increase and doesn't go up quite as much, so it's just not a significant increase that health has received the biggest.
What percentage of our students take, the students, of our employees take the health insurance?
Uh, roughly, um, I think it's about fifty-five, fifteen, you know, I'll hand? I, I looked at it before, I can, we can double-check that, I know I had Mr. Brian pull for me recently.
Because we, we do pay so much, and I'll call it subsidy, you know, for it,
It is.
that the other half of the people who don't take it get nothing at all.
And one of the, what we see on the county side, actually, is for their employees that don't participate, they actually get a monthly stipend for not participating in health insurance.
Yeah.
We can't afford them.
No. I, I do wanna point out, cause I know this was a question that came up from board members, because we had a, a pretty big increase in our SOQ requirements for our ELL teachers. So wanted to show you what, at each level, that SOQ was in FY twenty-six. Also showing you what our projected students were in the current year, what our actual students were this year. So you can see that we saw an increase just over what we projected in FY twenty-five, and then we're factoring in a larger increase, or another increase for FY twenty-six. So the FY twenty-six projected column is what we're calculating the FTEs required for. So for a level one, we have to have one teacher for every twenty level-one EL students.
Well, so what was it for FY twenty-four? I mean, I'm just saying, you're, you're basing it on, like, it could be that, that it will actually be a smaller increase next year than it was the previous year, right? Does that make sense?
Yeah, so.
Just two data points is not, like, it's not really a trend.
No, yeah, and it was a multi-year data point. Uh, Mr. Burnett actually worked on that, and pretty, I can let him explain kinda how he projected that.
Okay.
But we were well short in the current year, uh, projection, so we were kinda making up for that a little bit, and projecting another increase, but it was a multi-year, was it over three?
I looked at a couple of different models. The three-year would have actually been a higher increase than a one-year, uh, year-over-year, uh, increase. It was tailored a little bit by grade level, uh, as well. Ran some sensitivity testing to see which one would have been a more accurate performer for this year. And actually, a one-year rate, uh, was the most accurate of the different percentages I used. But this is an area where there's just a lot of, it's, it's very noisy data, because the population is inherently very, uh, is gonna shift a lot.
Right, okay.
It's interesting that level two and level four are fairly close in the projections to the actual. Level one, of course, we don't know exactly who's gonna be coming in, so I understand why there'd be a big difference. But I'm curious about level three.
Again, we don't know who they are either, because some of them come in as a level three.
That's right.
Right, well, but it'd be, it'd be good to see how our students are progressing. You know, of the students that are here, from twenty-five to twenty-six, how many moved from one level to another? And how many of that total number in the level just came into the school system?
That's data.
If, if we can get that, I mean, it would, it would paint a more full picture for me of, you know, are our students moving from one level to another that have been with us? Or, you know, are they staying and then getting more in, you know, and getting it more crowded on that level?
Yeah.
That's information we should, that's, that's data that we're required to report, um, for L progression, um, over time. So that's, that's, might, sorry, I missed what we.
And what percentage of the, the new students we're getting are these, different levels of the EOL?
What level do they?
You know, if we get a thousand new students, how many are EOL, and how are they broken down by level? Will we have that?
We do have those numbers, I don't have them in front of me.
Yeah, and I don't wanna nail, but I'm, I'm just.
Yeah, we can pull it.
I, I think it's significant to, to think about future trends. You know, are we, some, I mean, some students may not get out of a certain level.
They tend, they tend to move faster at levels one and two towards three, it's, it's harder for them to get to four. It takes a bit more time.
But we're doing.
And the age level in which they enter is, has a significant factor as well, younger students, I think it's much faster.
So, because this was a, a big jump and so many dynamic to it, as far as the state changes and our, our projections and, and growth, wanted to lay it out level by level for you, so you can see exactly where the FTE requirements are. So that far right quadrant, isn't the additional, that's the actual FTEs were required just to meet the SOQ. And then at the bottom, you'll see our current FTEs are a hundred and thirteen point five, and so we get to that thirty-six point five, because we need a hundred and fifty, technically, we need a hundred and forty-nine, but we have one, like, an itinerant position that serves, um, kind of our special sites like Phoenix and some of the day schools, or, and private days.
So how many do we need for this year that we don't have?
Thirty-six point, oh, for, oh, sorry, and the current year, we're.
Yes, yes.
So.
Of, of that thirty-six point five, how many of those are, are actual growth versus we are understaffed right now?
Um, yeah, so, so we have that, um, and Mr. Burnett's gonna pull it up really quickly, um, for us.
He doesn't like that really quickly.
I know, yeah, that.
I just said vamp from Mr. Paul.
Pulling up was fine, really quickly.
But this year was a little bit more complicated because of the state SOQ changes.
And we expect there may be conditional changes in the state SOQs.
We think it could go, well, so all the budget language and everything matches exactly how we've projected it here. What we heard is, oh, well, how you, how we actually allocate for the other category, which is, think of it as a, like a monitoring, so they've kind of progressed out of your level four, they're beyond that four point two, four point three rating on the WEADA test, that, um, they become a, a status where we still have to monitor them and check in with them, uh, very routinely. It's just not at the same level as, as one through four. And, um, what we heard from the state is maybe that SOQ ratio is, we don't have to treat all of those kids as other, we actually don't have to have any teachers for them. Now, I think what, what Patrick said in that Friday memo is, we still need to monitor those students, and so we don't wanna go to zero for that line, but we need, so we need to look at those and play with that. But technically, the budget language does not say that, um, so we're trying to get clarification. We have not seen any written guidance specifying that that other category SOQ is going away.
Yeah, what has been actually released in official guidance does not align with the.
What we received by either.
With zero, right.
It's by one person.
And normally, yeah. Normally, we would just go with what's on the budget, we're.
They probably just fired two.
Out of transparency, we're overcomplicating it by telling you, but just wanted to, wanted to be upfront that that, we could see a change there based on what we're hearing, but right now, we can't assume that's happening.
Right, right.
Because we know this is a big number, and so we want, anything that we get that suggests, hey, maybe that number is too big, we wanna be transparent about it, but I.
Right.
Uh, to answer the question of how many, uh, we would need to have, I'm, I'm gonna give a lawyer's answer, please forgive me. It depends. If you go, uh, it depends on which calculation method the state uses.
Right, right.
Um, and the answer would be either one hundred and nineteen point five, in which case we would be off by six, or one hundred and thirty. Now, I wanna emphasize, we are in compliance with the SOQ this year, because they gave a one-year grace period for school divisions. So long as you added enough positions to where you were the year before to make up half of the gap, which we did in spades. We, eight percent of the positions we were supposed to add. So we are in compliance this year, but we have to make up that for next year.
So it's between one nineteen and one thirty, is that what you just said?
Correct.
But we're in compliance because we don't have to meet.
Because for this year only, you didn't have to hit that number, you needed to make up half the gap between what your FY twenty-four number was.
Patrick, Patrick, give me those numbers again.
One nineteen and one thirty.
One nineteen or one thirty.
It's amazing I'm still waiting.
We're at one thirteen and a half.
And we're at one thirteen and a half.
And we're at one thirteen.
One thirteen, one five.
So we're missing six, because we just weren't able to fill it. Is that what I'm understanding right?
Because our, not because we couldn't fill it, um, all but one of our ESOL sessions are filled.
Sixteen, six or seventeen.
We budgeted based on projections that ended up being short of what our actual ESOL population was.
Oh, okay, because of the. Alright.
Okay, so we're moving under.
Now, to go back to how much we wanna ask for, we could just increase our base by a thousand dollars, which would take two point nine million out of that eight point seven, that would put us at thirty-two million.
What does that make the base again, fifty-one?
It would make it fifty-one.
Fifty-one.
Fifty-one five.
Fifty-one five, yeah.
So it'd be very close, fifty-two, fifty-one eight.
And Spacy, is that fifty-five? They're at fifty-one eight.
But their health insurance is more.
Oh, that's so close.
The fifty-one eight nine eight is there this year, so I don't, I don't know.
The four, they haven't really published a scale, they just.
We don't, we don't, we don't know what they are gonna go up to.
But they haven't posted their this year's.
They have not posted their scales, they posted like, they posted propose, like, what their compensation proposal changes are, but it wasn't a base scale, and in their budget documents, I couldn't find a starting teacher salary.
But we're starting to fall behind in the base scale, that's what worries me.
Yeah, we already are behind, yeah.
How about the masters? How do we compare with the masters supplement?
I, I would say it's pretty even across most.
No, I'm just curious, because when I looked at those supplements, it was quite, you know, you could, you could really increase your salary quite nicely by, you know, having.
Ed supplements, educational supplements.
Do we, do we, do we have to increase those supplements by the same percentage as everything else?
So, the ed supplements, we, we do three percent, because if we don't, then their overall pay from year to year doesn't go up that three percent? So we have to increase the ed supplements by whatever we want that minimum pay increase.
I mean, you do, but you don't have to.
Correct, you do not.
That's what they were the numbers I read.
They were, they were increased three percent from FY twenty-five and FY twenty-two.
You have to, if you wanna have that minimum three percent, like, or that average three percent.
For the teachers, because otherwise, the teachers that already get them, if we give them three percent, but then we take away the ed supplement, are we, what are we actually doing?
When you're taking it away, you just aren't adding three percent to the ed supplement.
But it impacts that year-over-year increase, so instead of three percent, it might be two point eight or two point nine.
And is that a, that would be a problem because of the state, or is that just?
No, that's just our personal, if we're saying we're, if we want that average to be three, or we want that minimum to be three, unless you're at the top of the scale. But the three percent, it's like roughly a hundred thousand dollars per one percent of the ed supplements that you do, it's not a significant.
It's not a huge head, we don't have that many people with ed supplements.
We do, it's just, yeah, cause your, the ed supplements, yeah, a couple thousand bucks, four thousand, five thousand, depending on the level.
Well, plus, I didn't know we gave them for plus fifteen. So if you have a masters plus fifteen, or if you have a bachelors plus fifteen, you get a supplement, then you get a masters, and masters plus fifteen, you know, and then, right?
And just so you know, when you're looking at that supplement list, you don't get the masters plus fifteen on top of the masters, you just get the masters plus fifteen.
Well, I know, but, but you get more.
It is a, yeah.
No, I'm just trying to find money, but what you're saying is that's just budget dust, I gotcha.
It's budget dust, I like that.
Sorry.
Only we can get a little more budget dust where.
Sliding our way.
On the revenue side.
On the revenue side, yeah.
So, kind of.
Hundred thousand after power of four hundred and twenty million is pretty small.
If you want, we can try to, in this, uh, we can try to email you or in the memo bullets, and send you some scenarios of what teacher skills would actually look like.
Oh, boy, we love scenarios. Oh boy, we love scenarios.
I, I would like to look at the scales, because I'm just worried that we are, we're increasing, we're doing the phase adjustments, but by not increasing the base, we're still falling behind. Because now, we aren't hiring those first-year teachers out of school because they're going to places where the, the base salary is much higher.
But maybe we're getting somebody up, upstream, cause that number, Patrick, right, has gotten better as our average age?
It's gotten, it's, excuse me, it has gotten better, I would say that where it has gotten better has been from, uh, recruitment fields where our salary is more competitive across the entire scale, not necessarily to the counties where our scale is not competitive.
It doesn't work with Prince William or Loudon or.
Correct.
So you're saying, it works with Caroline.
There are people, we, we, sometimes.
I don't, don't, maybe not.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we.
But I'm just, I'm just concerned that as our scale starts to fall, we become less competitive all the way around, even by increasing the phases.
But, the, the problem is, then we're not following through with our commitments, with the plan, and we made a commitment.
Well, the commitment, the plan was for both things together.
Well, well, but, but hypothetically, is, they shouldn't be following in line. The plan says for fifteen, is it sixteen to twenty, or whatever?
Fifteen to twenty.
Fifteen to twenty.
We're choosing to invest in people who are not here yet versus people who are already here.
So if, if we say we're gonna, we're gonna not do the phase because we wanna increase the base, I've seen this happen before. You might get some first-year teachers, but then your scale gets all uneven, and it, it, it just takes longer to get it corrected.
Right, what they're talking about is adding it, they'll keep the, they'll keep the three percent between, it's just, but it doesn't, it, it's not doing stuff for people sixteen, seventeen, eighteen years.
Well, that's what, I don't, I don't get it, and I know it's getting late, but the three percent, if we're gonna add, if we're gonna add the same, but we're not gonna add the same amount to each line, so.
It'll be a three percent differential for each student.
So what would happen is, One through fourteen, who've already been, hypothetically, through this adjustment, they would be getting the benefit, while the fifteen and up would be behind. So I'm, I, I understand what you're saying, but I, I'm just, you know, I, and I've, I've seen, I've seen given bigger pay raises and increasing class sizes, that doesn't work, I would not recommend that, but I've seen that as a way to, to raise pay.
The problem is, we need to do both things, and, and we can't do both things.
So we have to come up with an order situation?
So we have to, yeah, so, it's, it's like, what, what, what are we gonna ask for that tries to meet all of our needs? What's our number, and I'd like to look at the scales and see what the adjustment to base looks like, the adjustment to base by adding phase four, and then, you know, where, how we fall compared to.
And how much both would cost, you know, pie and a sky.
It's right there, it's right there, you, you, you add the eight point. It's fifteen point seven million.
Seven plus the seven, yeah, it's, it's, it's double what it would cost to do your full base four.
Well, you could reduce that, though, you could, instead of increasing the base to fifty-two thousand, you could just go up a thousand, and then it's only five point eight million.
This is just.
It's only five point eight million, it's my couch cushions, right?
Honestly, yes it is, I've seen how you've been trying to live, you might have that.
Maybe to you, Dr. Warner.
So, Dr. Warner, and I think for everything, if there's consensus around which scales, we're happy to put together, like, you want one for adjusting the base, up to.
Up to, but you put another thousand on the base.
So you wanna go.
Which would be five point eight million, um, increase, and then add the phase four, the full phase four.
So one adjusting, so adjusting the base by a thousand dollars and then completing phase four, is that one scale?
We can do that in one scale.
Well, your goal is to be competitive with, with Spotsy, you're still four hundred dollars behind.
We're still not, but we're not following as far behind.
Well, you're still four hundred behind.
We'll have to win over the rest with charm.
But it'll be cheaper to do it this year. Offer other things, our health insurance is better, our mentorship is better, there are things that we do that are better.
We pay for, pay for school, yeah, so there are other things that we do, where, where that,
that five hundred dollars, that four hundred dollars may not make a difference.
Excuse me, does Spotsy pay them twice a month or once?
Twice.
Twice. Ooh, they got this on that, too, okay.
Well.
Yeah, but they have only got just another six hundred thousand, you pulled that out of your couch cushions.
I don't, I know they were pursuing twice a month, two years ago, but I'm not sure if it made it into the budget, so, I don't know if they have gone there.
That's six hundred thousand, did we say, something like that?
Five to six hundred, it's in the budget as six hundred, but, I'm, I'm actually meeting with our payroll staff this week to try to. You were right, you know, it's six hundred, yeah, that's what we have.
I remember that's what we told.
Well, all right, we have work.
Okay, so I've got one scale you want us to provide you around the adjustment to the base by a thousand dollars and phase four, so we'll provide that teacher, teacher scale for that.
And I, yeah, and it's just, and the bottom line numbers, what are we looking at? You know, and, and could we increase their cost of health insurance by a little bit more? So that we're maybe not picking up as much of that cost.
Again, I think we're taking from people who are here to recruit people who aren't, and I'm not, I'm not super thrilled with that approach.
I don't know what the right answer is, but I, I mean, I kinda agree, we want people to stay, you know what I mean?
Oh, I, I agree.
But, but inflation has been quite high.
I, I, you're right, I just.
And that inflationary cost for, I mean, our prices have gone up because we're having to pay doctors and nurses and health insurance adjusters more money, and so.
It, it's just that, the base would, would have already been part of the adjustment, like we would have increased the base a certain percentage every year, and add the base, I think, and we're not doing all of those things.
I think this is a Missy question, it might be a Dr. Smith question, do you know where we are with scheduling three-on-three or, um, seven-on-seven?
Well, there is a seven that's already scheduled, we don't have the time, but we do have the date, it is.
Twenty twelve?
Yes. That'd be in the quarter.
Is the support.
But that's like a, a three, there is not one.
Where you do.
It's a support schedule.
I mean, quarter three is a little accident, I got a subpoena.
Phase two.
I mean, if we're gonna be, whatever the next phase.
Phase two, and we did phase one last year, phase two is.
So it's in here already for all the support schedules?
Yeah.
Okay.
It was in here, it was included in my proposal, and my funding request was phase two, the entire phase two, which goes through steps six to ten, through the off-service.
That's fine, I was gonna add it in.
Two, three days and times, they'll let you know what they are and which ones.
Ask them to do it monthly, or every other month, see if we can increase the number of times that we can meet with them.
We are trying to also work.
Because if we just go in and ask in quarterly, then they're, they're gonna not even give us quarterly. Ask for it monthly, tell, we wanna meet with them once a month.
That would be something the committee would have to add.
I think you're gonna piss them off by asking them that, I can hear it now.
Who do they think they are?
Let's try quarterly and maybe getting more than an hour of meeting time, that might be a good first step.
When it was set up, it was quarterly.
Well, why don't you suggest, or someone, whoever, suggest the date, or the times, like, put, give them three dates and times on paper, instead of, instead of waiting.
Who's on it this time? I'm on it.
And Alyssa.
She's on it.
And Alyssa.
So get it, let it go. Is Alyssa, are you here?
Are you awake?
Alyssa, she's not.
Alyssa's left the building.
We're still here.
But no, you don't listen, ugly.
Okay, feel better.
We are gonna.
We are. Uh-oh.
No!
It's probably, it was over me.
I was trying to over-hurt Maya.